All right, thank you everyone for this, being here today for this special budget meeting. If you all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we just ask that you be with us today as we have this meeting and give us wisdom, guidance, and discernment as we go through this day, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Art, Commissioner Peak, Commissioner Haskell, Commissioner Pearl Wright, Commissioner Whitaker, Commissioner Mudry, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Drosha, Commissioner Toomey, Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Christensen, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Barber, Chairman Mott.
Here. All right, before we get started in the meeting, I just want to go over a few of the guidelines and just let you know how this is gonna run. You're about to hear from the elected officials and departments about their work and budget needs. Thank you for giving them the chance and listening. You will then hear from some external agencies that received recommended cuts from the Board. And this is not all, the departments will hear from more departments next month. If you have questions, make them quick, please. Make them focused on budgetary questions and the materials that are being presented. Anything else, just write it down and we'll get the information to us later. And with that, we're gonna keep track of the time. Ben's gonna keep track and he'll just let me know when we're getting close, like five minutes, and then I'll let you know when your time is getting close. So with that, I think Connie, you had a couple words?
Well, yeah, I just want to say, like I took commissioners that I've said before, give them their time. They have an awful lot to say to you and they were given a short amount of time. The amount of work that departments put into this, you think it might be five minutes, 10 minutes, because they know their operation, but they went into great detail. You can see that from what's in your packet. So give them the opportunity to speak. They're gonna go quick, but then afterward, please read the materials. Please make sure you understand what they're telling you and the devastation that they're looking at. I do want to clarify one thing, and I don't know if it was confused somehow through discussions that we had related to a grant policy or confusion, I don't know. First, my office did receive a cut. The exact amount, I was gonna say 109,000, so I was close, but the exact amount was 108,874. So we are having to present as well later about the cuts and the way that my office works, and we'll do that. But related to the grants, first, looking at a cut. Second, we are not, and we did not ask for a grant position to be added to handle the grants that we have. The discussion came out of, I believe, when Ben was giving his presentation, and I can look at Commissioner Haskell who said it, I believe that Commissioner Whitaker said it. A lot of companies, agencies will have a grant person on staff, and that's where that admin fee comes from that we're looking at. That would be to actually bring in more grants at some future point and to have that position be covered by the grant admin fee. I would never ask for a position to be added at this point. We're not there yet. We're looking at what operations need to be cut and which operations we need to keep. My office is not anti-grants. We have a lot of work to do. We're down an accountant, so if you're hearing that I'm irritated about that, I'm not irritated about it, but I'm doing the grant work and some of them I'm not capable of doing because they've changed so much. So just understand, that's to the public, that's to everybody. We're here to support you. That's what my office does. We'll continue to do that on and on and on again. So we're not trying to take something away from you, we're trying to keep up with the work that we have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll just add that we'll probably take a break, I don't know, hour and a half, two hours, and then we're gonna break for lunch at some point to around 12, 12:30 maybe, just depending on how this goes, for about 30 minutes, and then we'll reconvene after that. Okay, with that, we're, next up, we've got limited public comment. Did I miss something? Oh, agenda changes, additions?
No.
Oh, wait, did we have one? Well, we did remove, sorry.
We removed tri-county office on aging, and then the medical care is not on here. Medical care facility will not be present, but I will be talking about the cut that was made, and I think that was it.
Community mount, might have to go first?
Okay, sure, community mount, that's not an agenda change, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, did we have a motion to move? Okay, all right, moved by Commissioner Drosha, or Commissioner Barber, supported by Commissioner Drosha. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, now we are at limited public comment. If there was anyone that would like to address the Board, please approach podium.
Good morning. My name is Steve Seegrist, and I'm a longtime resident of Eaton County. I stand before you today not as a concerned citi-, only as a concerned citizen who cares deeply about public safety, but also as someone who has spent a significant portion of my professional life working to make our county safer and stronger. I served as Eaton County's Community Corrections Director for 11 years between the years of 2002 and 2017. During that time, I wrote the grants that brought in a considerable amount of money, funding for it to launch and sustain our community corrections programs and specialty treatment courts. I also had the privilege of administering these programs along with dedicated staff and judges. I was able to watch firsthand the positive measurable impact that they have on individuals, families, and our community as a whole. I remain a member of the Eaton County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Prior to working for Eaton County, I completed a 32-year career with the Michigan Department of Corrections, working in correctional facilities with the Michigan Parole Board, and in probation and parole positions as a field agent and manager. These programs work. They help criminal offenders achieve sobriety, rebuild their lives, and most importantly, avoid returning to the system. They reduce recidivism, divert individuals from our jail, and alleviate the burden on our law enforcement and court systems. As an educator of criminal justice for 36 years, both at Ferris State University and Lansing Community College, I can say without hesitation that Eaton County has been ahead of the curve in applying proven, evidence-based practices to community safety. The success of our programs is not anecdotal. It is documented and real. The county has wisely invested a financial share in these programs, while federal and state grants have brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. That important county contribution is a catalyst, leveraging far greater resources and generating real returns in terms of reduced crime, safer roads, and healthier families in our county. The county has wisely invested a financial share in these programs, while federal and state grants have brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. That important county contribution is a catalyst, leveraging far greater resources and generating returns in terms of reduced crime, safer roads, and healthier families. But if we let these programs lapse, if we eliminate their funding, we will see the consequences. Substance abuse relapses, overdoses, increased arrests, longer court dockets, more intoxicated drivers on our roads, and a heavier financial and emotional burden on the families of those that we could have helped. Our treatment courts are selective and strategic. Offenders are thoroughly vetted by the prosecutor's office and community corrections coordinators. Their cases are expedited, pleas are taken quickly, and the need for costly, time-consuming trials is greatly reduced. Commissioners, we're talking about programs that enhance public safety, reduce incarceration costs, and help people get back on their feet.
Steve, I got, need to wrap it up. I'm sorry, my apologies, we have about three.
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
I respectfully urge you to continue funding the county's portion of the budget. Help us keep these vital programs alive for the benefit of Eaton County residents today and for generations to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, with that, we are going to get started. First up, we have the elected officials' offices, and first is county clerk.
Okay. Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. As I begin this morning, I'm aware that most people don't really know what my offices do, nor the statutory requirements which we must follow. So during the next few minutes, I'll present a larger picture of what we do as concisely as I can. County residents and this Board rely on me to fulfill my mandated responsibilities, and we have some major jobs to do. Pardon me. You will see in your packet an overview sheet for each of my four divisions, and they list the many duties of our four divisions. And I won't go over each one of them, but I'm hopeful that you will read through those and gather those. For the past 13 years, I've had the honor of holding the Constitutional Office of the County Clerk. It's one of the most diversified in county government, governed by 596 statutes. They fall under these major divisions. Clerk of the Circuit Court, Vital Records Registrar, Chief Election Official for the County, and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners. In addition to these, I serve as the Register of Deeds, with over 400 statutes covering that office. In many of Michigan's counties, 48 out of 83, the Register's Office is still a separate constitutional office, held separately and elected separately. In our county, the Register of Deeds and County Clerk were combined way back in 1947, so this dual role of clerk register has saved Eaton County the cost of a separate elected official for over 78 years, though the savings has been on the backs of the clerks and the chief deputies who have to share that responsibility. In 2008, budget cuts eliminated a Circuit Court clerk file position, file clerk position, and two part-time positions in my vital records office. Their cubicles have remained empty ever since, a testament to what the cutting of positions does to our offices. State statute requires adequate staffing at serviceable levels, and we are at minimal levels at this time, and that is also at the expense of the staff who has decided to remain with us. I currently have eight deputy clerks, three up in Circuit Court Clerk's office, three in the Register's Office, and two in my vital records office. I also have a chief deputy in each of those departments to oversee office operations. I'm going to talk a lot about elections this morning because we need an election staff that's solely dedicated to running elections. Election administration has greatly expanded in recent years. Since the passing of Proposal Two of 2022, the election specialist positions has transformed into a much bigger position. Those constitutional changes have increased the amount of work that county clerks have to put into elections, including nine days of early voting for every state and federal election. So that meant that last year, Kim and I were out of the office actually running an early voting precinct for over 27 days. That took us away from all of our regular duties, which are many. Added to that is the required early voting testing of all those ballots and tabulators, so that adds an extra 20 hours of testing for every state and federal election, August and November, and presidential primary when they're every four years. Yet another time-consuming mandate is the Campaign Finance Administration, which requires so much staff hours and much knowledge of election law. So if you look at the sheet for the election department, you'll see there's a lot of things that we do. The responsibilities are vast. Yet with all of that, our election department consists of only one person, one employee. It's just not a good plan. Also in the clerk's office, the chief deputy, Kim Morris, also serves as our election specialist. Historically, those two offices have been separate, they're separate positions, but they were combined in 2014 due to our staffing issues. So Kim holds both positions and has done a fantastic job juggling both, but this dual role is no longer sustainable. State law established three to four election dates every single year that are available, and it gives the county clerks the responsibility of preparing and administering all city, village, school, library, fire district, in addition to county, state, and federal elections. Recent changes in election law require an even higher level of knowledge than they used to in the past, and staff time to properly administer the elections. Kim and I are also required to maintain annual election accreditation with the State Bureau of Elections. And throughout our history here at Eaton County, it's only ever been the county clerk and one election specialist working together to accomplish all these tasks. This is no longer a viable solution either. Newly-elected county clerks just cannot be counted on to have the expertise needed for election administration out of the gate. So it falls to the election staff to carry forward the knowledge and expertise that is critical. So in looking for solutions, pardon me, to do more with less and to create a separate election department, we are combining our, my Register's Office with the County Clerk's Office. As of today, we're making that change right now, today, and by Monday, we'll be up and running in our new offices. This will allow us to cross-train both offices to alleviate short staff in both, mainly the County Clerk's Office, because we have just two vital records positions there. I want to thank Chad and Tony and staff, along with IT staff, for making this happen today, and it's gonna be very helpful for all of us, and save staff hours and many other solutions. But in addition to helping with low staffing, I'll now be able to get by with just one chief deputy supervising these combined offices. My Register of Deeds Chief Deputy Lisa Nelson will now be able to oversee both Deeds and Clerk's Office, and Kim will now be able to devote her time to election administration, separate from the vital records office that she's constantly pulled into because we're short, frequently short, vital staff. That's what our election department has needed for a very long time. There are many efficiencies and savings to come from this change, and I am so grateful to the Treasurer for his willingness to help us accomplish this, and also to Connie for the suggestion of this. So looking again at the materials, you'll see that each of my four division, the services are listed here, but this is an overview, there's a lot more we could have put in, didn't do that. I believe it'll show that all four divisions affect the well-being of the county residents every day in big and small ways, from issuing their marriage license or CPL, filing their divorce case or personal protection order, recording the deed to their house or issuing a property fraud alert, or producing and administering elections. We greatly impact people's lives. By law, my departments must preserve and permanently archive all of these records, so we are literally the keepers of their life documents. Our residents and our businesses would not be able to conduct legal transactions, their legal transactions, without the functions of these four divisions, not without access to our documents and certifications. And as you'll see from the lists, it takes knowledge and expertise to perform these services, which my staff does so well. Every day, they demonstrate their dedication, and this is what is so critical to retain here at the county. As you look at the Circuit Court Clerk overview, you'll see that it's a very busy office. In addition to processing all Circuit Court filings, felonies, divorces, personal protection orders, civil cases over 25,000, their list of statutory responsibilities is very long. The Circuit Court deputies support the three judges' offices, working tightly with numerous other offices, front of the court, prosecutor's office, probation department, and community corrections. Over the past two trying years, my Circuit Court Clerk Chief Deputy Kelly Riglesworth has had to become an overnight expert in several areas where new laws have been passed. Kelly had to quickly create and implement new procedures. Other counties have even benefited from Kelly's templates as she shared her amazing work on these projects. She also created a long-needed Circuit Court Clerk Office Procedure Manual that is required, but we never had time to do it done, to get it done. It's digital and searchable and invaluable. Along with Kelly, my three Circuit Court Deputy Clerks work very hard creating and maintaining case files for the court while providing excellent customer service, and their dedication is evident every day. Same is true for my Register of Deeds Office. My Chief Deputy in Deeds, Lisa Nelson, is busy streamlining that office, finding new ways, finding new ways to serve the public. She's found and explored a new system, which I'll talk about in a minute, that will expand services to the public and may have the ability to raise office income, to bring in income. I'm gonna try to skip ahead a little. I would like to bring that to you, that proposal, in July. Lisa's staff is amazing. I'm grateful for their willingness to cross-train with the clerk's office, it's gonna be a huge help to us all. And I'm grateful to Lisa for agreeing to take on the chief deputy position over two offices to allow this to happen. You'll see in the paperwork, the great interdependence of all of our offices, and I'm running short of time, so I am, I won't tell you all those, but please read how they are all interdependent, and a cut in FTEs in any of those offices would affect many others, including state offices. So I have a proposal for the cost savings and increased revenue in my departments. The first, of course, is the consolidation plan taking place now, but as of 10-1, I'm proposing the elimination of an unfilled halftime position that I have, and along with that, having my chief deputy register become the one supervisor over both offices. This would allow my chief deputy, the current chief deputy, Kim, to be reclassified as election director as we solely need. In the spring, I am interested in making a switch to a better record system that I spoke about, and I had a lot to say about that, but I will save that for July, but I'm just grateful to Nathan Nybert from IT for fact-finding on this project, and I plan to present that, more information next month. It will affect other departments because it's helpful to those. And finally, I'm proposing to raise fees for certified copies that are currently $15 for the first certified copy and $8 for each additional, raising it to 20 for the first copy and 10 for each additional. This is very comparable with larger counties' fees, according to a Michigan survey I have. The estimated annual increase in revenue would be approximately $21,500. We would, of course, continue to offer reduced-cost certified copies to seniors and a no-cost certified copy in the case of a hardship. Lastly, I'd like to raise my election programming costs. This would affect schools and locals' budgets a bit, but it hasn't been raised in over 12 years. So looking at other similar counties, I would like to go from charging $125 per ballot style to 200 per ballot style. Estimated increase would be $12,000 during the even-year elections. I want to close by saying my office has sustained budgetary reductions and has never fully recovered since the 2008 recession. As a constitutional officer, I have many mandates for services. Continued reductions in these departments will reduce them to less-than-minimum serviceable level that is required by statute and will impact services that we provide to the public. Thank you for your time, and please review the information sheets. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Bosworth. All right, we have five minutes or so for questions for Diane. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? Diane, you mentioned the transition, is that happening this week, next week?
Right now.
Right now?
As I speak, my staff, Treasurer's staff, IT staff, and physical plant are busy working to make that happen.
Okay.
Started yesterday afternoon, it'll probably be finished by noon or a little after, but because we have no customers today, all right. We'll be up and running Monday morning. We might not be able to find everything right when we need it, but we'll make it happen, and I'm really grateful to everybody that helped us get this done.
Okay, good, good, that was, I think that's a really good decision. So going back to your staff, you have, what was it, six FTEs?
Three, three, and, three, two, and three for the regular staff that does the work every day, and then each one has a chief deputy.
Okay, and how long have you been at that?
How long have I?
Had that number, because you've been short since, really, 2008.
We were cut drastically in 2008, and then again in 2017, there was some trimming, so, long time. Empty desks, if you've ever walked into the county clerk's office, you see the ability to have four people in cubicles, it's been two since 2008.
Okay, I just wanted to give some, you know, history and background.
Thanks, and upstairs, we are short one-file clerk, which allows, doesn't allow them to do the ancillary work that they need to do away from their daily filing of cases. They have to come in on weekends to get the file purging done that's needed.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. And I'll just remind everybody, and as we went through this first one, we're gonna give a five-minute warning to, I think everybody knows their time limit, okay, so we're just, I'll just hold up five, when it gets to five minutes before time is up, so just so you're aware. All right, we're gonna go on to the next one, which is Treasurer's Office. Treasurer Raynet?
Good morning. I am Eaton County Treasurer, Darius Raynet. The Treasurer's Office is mandated to provide many services which puts us in direct contact with the public, such as receiving tax payments, providing tax information, and even purchasing dog licenses. In terms of the traffic and call volume we receive, I think we're only second to the clerk's office. Since we're often the, one of the main contact points to the public, it's essential that we continue to maintain our current staffing levels in order to provide quality customer service, so that when people leave, they're happy or at least satisfied with the transaction. I think this represents an excellent opportunity for the county by continuing this level of service to foster goodwill and enhance our standing within the community. Some of the services the county treasurers provide are the mandated services, include cash receipting, department deposits, tax settlement with local authorities, property tax administration, delinquent tax, the collection of that and dispersment of those taxes to the locals, managing the delinquent. the locals, managing the delinquent tax revolving fund, also cash flow management and banking, and dog licenses. These services are essential to safeguarding public assets, facilitating commerce and promoting public safety. Additional mandated services are forfeitures and property tax foreclosures. As the foreclosing governmental unit, or FGU, the Treasurer's Office forecloses on taxed delinquent properties and handles these dispositions through two annual tax sales. And I'd like to note that the expenditures from the foreclosure fund, and also including the salary or payroll for the foreclosure specialists, are paid through the foreclosure fund itself and not out of the general fund. I mention foreclosure services here because they are such an integral part of Treasury operations, and also our foreclosure specialist serves as backup for the three deputy treasurers in my office. Our office has both internal, or county department, customers and external customers, the tax-paying public. And then we have another class of customer, that is the local units of government, township, cities, villages, school districts, any entity that assess a tax. One of the most important functions of a county treasurer is the annual tax settlement. As you know, taxes are assessed, determined, billed at the local level, collected, and then that money is transferred to the county. And one of the processes during this time is there is a settlement, and that involves a lot of data, data entry, reconciliation, and posting of payments. And it can be a very long involved process, often requires two or more staff people, and they have to alternate between working on settlement and serving other customers, whether they come in to the counter or over the phone. Should we lose staff, either through layoff or attrition, we could cause local governments to experience cash flow problems due to delays of processing the tax settlement. Also, we're obligated under state law to pay the locals for their delinquent taxes, and this further highlights the need that we maintain our current staff. Another essential service that I mentioned earlier, foreclosure services. Eaton County, some years ago, elected to do this activity itself rather than leaving it up to the state. Some counties do that, a handful. Foreclosure is a four-year-long process, starting when taxes first become delinquent. That would be in the first year. And through each of these years, there's various legal notices that must be sent, each with a strict deadline as the property moves from delinquency to foreclosure, to ex-tax sale, and then after the tax sale, the disposition of any proceeds. And I would think, and at this point, I'd like to mention something regarding foreclosures. For several years, the Treasurer's Office and the foreclosing unit has worked with two local nonprofits, Capital Area Community Services and Housing Services of Mid-Michigan, to aid people who are in foreclosure, and they are partners in this. Some of the services provided include financial counseling, tax assistance, and other help. One of my first official duties here was back in January, when we had what was called a show-cause hearing with people in foreclosure, and we met with about, I think, 10 individuals or families. And what would happen is that some of the services that CACS provided would be, a lot of times, people are not very much financial means, and they hadn't filed a tax return in years, so they found out that if they filed, they would do a refund, and that would give them enough money to pay the back taxes and also help them with the other expenses. They also provide financial counseling, how to do a budget and things like that. The people that we met with, if they'd either used the services through one of these two groups, or had a viable plan to pay back the amount that they owed, we would put a hold on the foreclosure of their property. We'd get granted, I think in most cases, like six months to pay it off. And we were able to take that, or take those out of the foreclosure process, and those are homes that are not going to be part of the foreclosure sale that we're having later on this year. As my predecessor said, we're supposed to collect taxes, not houses. And I think that is correct, and as Treasurer, I really want to make foreclosures and tax sales the last resort. Tracking and responding to Circuit Court orders is also a critical task of the foreclosure unit. If we're to lose a staff person, there's a failure, there's a possibility that we could fail to keep up with all the many laws, statutes, and rulings, which could put the county in legal jeopardy. There've been a number of recent court cases regarding the return of foreclosure proceeds, Raphael is one of them, and this further highlights the need for an experienced person in that position. Some of the other services we provide to our internal customers include investing cash in our banking. This is primarily the duty of me and the Chief Deputy Treasurer, although we do rely on the staff to do bank reconciliations and help with related tasks. Treasury staff is also involved in county bond proposal activities, such as accounting for the drain proceeds and ensuring that there's enough money on hand to make the semi-annual payments. And as we've seen with the bank inter-county drain, and then last week with the capital improvement bonds, the total number of bonds we've had to keep track of in this fiscal year has increased and will likely grow in the future. The last service that I mentioned, dog licenses, that's something that we handle. When I heard that, I thought of the old joke about you can't even get elected to be dogcatcher. So, well, I wasn't elected dogcatcher, but I do have the responsibility of issuing the licenses. I think this goes back to olden times when there was concern about gangs of dogs and rabies and that sort of thing. State law actually says that either the treasurer, the county treasurer, or a local treasurer has that, and I guess we took over this responsibility from the locals a few years back. Just for reference, in the last previous fiscal year, 2324, we sold 3,969 dog licenses, bringing in $102,415 in fee revenue, which gets transferred to the Sheriff's Office. Treasury, the Treasurer's Office, where I recognize the financial challenges the county is facing, and we are certainly willing to share that hardship. The most visible example of our commitment was mentioned a moment ago with the relocation of our offices to the space occupied previously by the Clerk's Office. Well, this is, represents an inconvenience, a smaller office area. We're happy to participate in this because of the savings that will result to the general fund. Also, I'd like to mention that our office has purposely avoided unnecessary and frivolous expenditures. For example, I had a small printer on my desk, turned that in. I found that there were two iPads. I was issued an iPad, and then we had another iPad for foreclosure. We used that to the property. The guy takes pictures of the property. We turned that in, and he uses mine now. We had a fax machine that we turned in, and also canceled the landline for that, which was the more expensive part of that equipment. I didn't update or replace two PCs, and I also donated to GIS, Geological Services, a drone, which I had discovered in my office, which was among the purchases of my predecessor. He had all sorts of stuff in there. It looked like the last time it was used in 2017, and it was, you know, the insurance had lapsed on it, and I didn't really see any need for it. I think he purchased it for taking pictures of the foreclosed property. And I said, if they can, you know, I talked to IT and I said if they could use it, fine. Also, on the revenue side, we did increase delinquent tax database request fees from 25 cents per parcel to 30. That's something that a vendor would use, not the general public. They can still go online for free and look up a parcel. And also, a staff person found a way to reduce mailing costs by emailing owners of dogs to renew their license rather than sending out a notice of the mail. Closing, as demonstrated by our office move, I'm open to solutions to the current budget crisis, and I'm happy to collaborate on policy decisions such as the recently passed delinquent tax revolving fund policy. And I request from the board that so that my office can maintain at least the current level of staffing and remain, and comply with the increasing statutory requirements and remain a reliable steward of county funds, I'd like the board to maintain the current staffing level and approve the rest of the 25, 26 budget requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Any commissioners have any questions? So, I want to thank you for agreeing to the transition.
Certainly.
Yeah, I mean, you could have easily denied, but it helps out the county, and so appreciate that.
We'll get office space.
I'm sure it'll take a little bit of time to transition, get a feel for it. Commissioner Holmes?
How many total staff do you have? You mentioned three deputy treasurers. How many beyond that?
Well, we have six FTEs, which includes me, so I have three deputy treasurers, and then a chief deputy treasurer, and then the foreclosure specialist/deputy treasurer, so that's five, and then my position makes six.
Thank you.
So, five staff.
Any other questions? Commissioner Haskel?
The clerk had mentioned being able to find some savings in reducing demand on their staff by switching IT systems and record systems. From your perspective, is your office kind of more modern? Are we in the modern timeframe, and is there any savings you could see in modernizing your systems?
Well, we did look at moving the BSNA system from, because it's on a server, to the cloud. A lot of the locals are using that, and that was one of their suggestions, is that, because I guess there's a difference or time delay between the information on some of the local units, because they had the cloud, and our SSSR office, and then when we get that information as well. But the cost to move to the cloud was an increase that was prohibitive at this time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a viable option at this time.
More of a convenience than a savings?
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
Any other questions? Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Prosecutor's Office. Who is it? Nope, sorry. Scribbled, I scribbled a little too fast. Next up is Trial Courts. Not a good way to start.
We have a, I have a little PowerPoint, so if you could, it's just like we gotta plug in our laptop, they help us figure it out, on how to get it to present up there. Okay. I would have put this up first, but I didn't want it to be in the way of the other speakers, so. See, IT. There we go. Okay. Is it up there? Yes, all right. Good morning. I'm Judge Cunningham, and I'm the Chief Judge of the Trial Courts. We're here today to talk about the Trial Court budget, but first, Chairman, Commissioners, on behalf of the courts, all of our employees, we thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation. We know this is a very difficult time for the county, and we appreciate you taking time out of your day to have this special meeting. The first thing that I have to address is the preliminary recommendation regarding the budget cut. The amount is $836,000 was recommended or voted on preliminarily. That was based on a list that was given to you that showed the following vacancies. I believe one commissioner even made the comment, if the courts have been able to function without these positions, let's start there with that number. That makes sense. The problem is, that is not accurate information. We have not been functioning without those positions. First and foremost, the Deputy Court Administrator was listed on that tally that you received. That is a critical position to the operation of our Trial Courts. Most importantly, that position was not vacant on that day. In fact, the Deputy Court Administrator was working upstairs. It was listed because she had said she was going to retire, so that position was listed as vacant. We have 115.5 full-time employees that perform functions for the Circuit Court, Probate Court, and District Court, and the four departments that help us perform our essential functions. Clearly, that cannot be handled by one person. Excuse me. They perform necessary functions for our oversight, and it cannot be left vacant. Generally, the Deputy Court Administrator serves as primarily for the District Court, but also helps in other areas, and of course, is there when our court administrator is not present. Another position that was listed as being vacant was the court recorder. Court recorder is essential to the functioning of the court, and I want to explain to you why. We are mandated, when we are in court, any of the judges, we are mandated that all proceedings have to be recorded. But it's not just recorded. It must be recorded by someone who is certified. To be certified, you have to go to classes and take tests. What that means practically is if somebody is unavailable because they're sick or on vacation, we just can't pull in a warm body to record. We need somebody who has that required certification. The training helps them, because what they do in the courtroom is they facilitate the submission of exhibits, they operate Zoom hearings, which is more complicated than what you would imagine, especially putting attorneys into confidential breakout rooms, and they also make sure they're listening to make sure it's audible, so that we are meeting our mandate to have a recording of everything that occurs. In addition to that, they prepare the transcripts of the court proceedings when requested, and then there are mandated transcripts that they have to prepare. This one position provides coverage for all five courtrooms, so it is essential for our functioning to have that position. The other position I need to mention is the District Court magistrate. District Court is required to handle a high volume of cases. Currently, we have over 80 cases waiting to be scheduled for informal hearings because we have not had a magistrate to help with the caseload. They also conduct informal hearings, which generate money for the county, and they hear a lot of cases from people that are what we call improper, where a citizen comes in without an attorney and needs to have their issue addressed by the court. Now, recently, you did approve, and we thank you, by the way, for that, the contractual attorney magistrate, but recognize, we reduce those hours. The magistrate had previously worked 25 hours a week, and now we have that contract with that attorney magistrate you approved only working eight hours a week. We estimate that savings to the county to be about $40,000 a year. We are looking at being able to incorporate what's called a non-attorney magistrate into the system to help our judges with their caseload, and we anticipate we'll have to do that internally by training some of our staff to be able to handle that. We can't really make a final decision on that until we know what our final budget's going to be, but we are looking at ways to address that. So, those are just three examples of that list that you were given of vacancies that we have to fill. We have constitutional mandates, we have mandates by the Supreme Court, and we have a mandate by the citizens of this county to provide timely resolutions to their legal disputes. Now, we had to turn in Now, we had to turn in seven templates, one for Circuit Court, one for Probate Court, one for District Court, and then the four divisions that I told you about, which is the Friend of the Court, the Probation Department, the Juvenile Department, and Community Corrections. I can't possibly stand up here and go through all seven templates right now in the time that I've been given, and I realize that you, you're inundated with information right now. There's no way you could have looked at everything that we've all submitted and are sitting there, understanding what all of the departments do. So I'm just going to briefly go through what we do to put it in perspective. If you want a copy of this later, so when you're actually looking at the templates, if this would help you, we have copies for you. But let me start with the Circuit Court. Thirty-five percent of the filings in Circuit Court are criminal. People generally think that's all we do, because that's what gets the notoriety, that's what takes the long time in trial, but realistically, 35% of our filings are criminal. We anticipate an increase in that. Any increase you hear about today from any of the other department heads impact us. If you have an increase in elections, it's going to impact us. You have an increase from the Treasurer, it's going to impact us. Our employees have to make sure that the court recorder is accurate and available. Our employees assure that everything runs. The judges can't do that. We have to be reviewing the files and sitting in court, so we rely on the employees to make sure everything is run as it should be. The reality is that in Circuit Court, we are a court of law, so we hear legal issues. We're a court of equity, so we hear equitable issues, and we are the appellate court. We're the appellate court for the District Court and the Secretary of State. Sixty-five percent of our filings are civil. What kind of cases do we do? This is not an exhaustive list, but you probably know individuals that have personal injury, auto negligence, contracts, boundary disputes, school district issues, municipal disputes, appeals from the District Court, appeals from the Secretary of State, driver's license restorations, expungement, and finally, family court matters. That is huge. You may not realize, but every county in Michigan is required to have a family court. It is mandated. I'm proud to say that we just finished our family court plan, we submitted it to the Supreme Court, and it has been accepted. That is not a small feat. I know many counties that their plan was actually rejected by the Supreme Court, and they had to go back and regroup to get it approved. What does the family court do? We do bench trials, and we hold evidentiary hearings. We talk, we deal with divorce, custody, parenting time, child support, domicile, property division, spouse support, and PPOs. All of those things end in a final order, but that doesn't end the case. Oftentimes, people come back and they want to make changes to their custody agreements, parenting time, child support obligations. Sometimes, people claim they didn't get their property distribution, so they want us to enforce it. They didn't get their child support, so we need to enforce it, or somebody violated a PPO. That's called a post-judgment. Those don't show up in our new filing numbers. So if you were to look at the numbers and said, well, this many new cases were filed in 2024 in the family division, that would not include all the times we have to go back into court and hear these follow-up cases. And I will tell you, most family court judges will tell you, over 50% of the time we are in the courtroom on family court matters, it is post-judgment issues. So, because there is so much to be done by the family court, we have to have a friend of the court. Many years ago, the legislature realized it was necessary, it was created by statute, and they enforce and modify orders regarding all of the issues that I've just talked about. In addition, they facilitate meetings with the parties at the beginning of cases, they address all of the issues, and they interview children that are involved in the case. They also hold hearings to resolve issues, they have show cause hearings, and they prepare reports for us. In other words, the family court cannot function without a friend of the court, plus we are required to, by statute, to have a friend of the court. So now we turn to the Probate Court. The Probate Court regularly issues orders on an emergent basis. What does that mean? That means that the judge has to drop what she is doing and handle that matter right there. That means that the staff has to get all of the information ready. The Probate Court monitors guardianships involving minors, developmentally delayed individuals, and legally incapacitated adults. They supervise estate administration, they are the keeper of your wills and your trusts, and they supervise trust litigation. Also, the probate judge hears civil matters about fraudulent transfers by fiduciaries, property disputes, and wrongful death claims. I can say unequivocally that our Probate Court has the highest degree of professionalism with the least amount of staff. There is no way that we can make any changes to the Probate Court, because they are already doing everything they can to keep up with the caseload they have, and they do it very well, and I think your constituents would say that when they go into the Probate Court and go up to the counter. But the Probate Court is also involved in the family court, because we have a juvenile court, that I think that you're very well aware of. The juvenile court is a division of the family court. The juvenile court is part of our mandated family court plan that I just explained to you. They handle the delinquency, abuse and neglect, and designated juvenile cases. They also handle the juvenile guardianships and adoptions. They also do personal protection orders for people under the age of 18. There are strict and certain time requirements for handling these matters. When we get mandates from the Supreme Court of how quickly we have to do things, that impacts all of our operations, and it really puts a lot of burden on our staff to make sure that everything is prepared and then filed. Recently, you're aware of the juvenile justice reform legislation. This has created so many more mandates for the juvenile division. For example, they now have to do screening and assessing. There's mandatory data collection and reporting, and they have an inclusion of performance measures, which means we have to make sure that we are doing what they require us to do, otherwise, there will be repercussions with the Michigan Supreme Court. Now, there's good news. The changes in the Child Care Fund reimbursement rate mean that you, the Eaton County residents, are going to get approximately $320,000 back in reimbursement for the four full-time employees that we have in juvenile court, and I think that was explained to you this, because they've raised the percentage. But Judge Pollard is here, and if you have questions about that when I'm done, I know that she would love to come up and talk to you about that. District Court. As in Probate Court and Circuit Court, where most of our filings are civil, not criminal, that's true for District Court. Twenty-nine percent of the filings are criminal, and they're filed by either our prosecutor or city attorneys. I'm sure you're aware that Grand Ledge has an attorney that files things, Eaton Rapids, Charlotte, and the Attorney General's Office. Eighty-one percent of their, of the other filings are civil. They have three divisions with court clerks. Each one of those divisions does something unique in the type of cases that they hand, that they handle. They are responsible for creating case files, they prepare and serve notices, they calendar all events, they take payments for filings, they take fines, fees, and restitution, and they're available to the public and the parties on inquiry. To put it in perspective, when you hear someone say that they filed a lawsuit, or the prosecutor filed a new case, that's like one piece of paper. There has to be somebody that has to, that creates the file, puts it in the system, takes all the other filings that come in from all the other people involved, log it in. They have so much work to do when just one piece of paper is filed. Our District Court clerks work very hard and have been working with less resources. They are responsible for the overall maintenance and preservation of the court records, and that is a very big responsibility. District Courts, our District Court and all District Courts in the state of Michigan have the highest volume of cases and traffic. When you walked in here today, if you would have went left, you would have seen one window for the District Court, and if you went down the hallway, there's another window. The people that, staff that have to get up and answer inquiries, sometimes they're actually like the information center, right? Somebody comes in and they're looking for Diana's office, and they say, oh, no, that's down there. Those interruptions, you know, impact their flow, as we all know. So the District Court performs many services, and they probably impact your constituents more than any of the other courts because of the type of cases that they handle. District Court probation is a part of that, and they are a necessary function, and it's provided for by statute. They provide mandated services that the District Court has, and it cannot be eliminated. I need to make that very clear. It cannot be eliminated. One of the things they do, for example, is if somebody is convicted of OWI, you're required to have, for the judge, a certified assessment. We are so fortunate that our District Court probation officers have been educated and certified, they provide those assessments to our judges, so we don't have to go outside of the court. Recent changes in criminal law impact the District Court process very much. I'm not sure if you've been aware of the changes, but you need to understand that there is now a presumption that a defendant, a person accused of a crime, has to be put back into our community before trial. In other words, we just can't make people stay in jail, and then after they're convicted, we have to allow them to go back in the community. Now, the law says that the judges can do that with conditions that make the community safe. Those conditions are usually some type of testing, sometimes a GPS monitor, sometimes they have to be in counseling, like anger management for domestic violence, things like that, and they have to take classes. Well, who's going to make sure they're doing that? I've had the privilege of living here for 40 years, and now all three of my adult children live in Eaton County. That means my grandchildren live in Eaton County. When we're driving on the roads, I want to make sure that if somebody has an alcohol problem, and we've had to put them back on our roads, that they're not drinking and driving. Who's going to make sure they're, you've heard the term blow and go, or they have to have that in their car? Who's going to make sure that happens? They test negative, or they test positive for methamphetamine, how are we going to know that? This is an essential service. It's an essential service to each of your constituents, including me and my family. And finally, I have to talk about community corrections, because I know that treatment courts save us thousands of dollars. Without treatment courts, our jails are going to be more full. That's going to be more cost to us, the community, and prison. While prison cost is across all of the taxpayers in Michigan, it is still an added cost that we have. Research shows unequivocally that our programs benefit the participant, and it benefits Eaton County. We have productive citizens, who, I have people who have gone through my courts, and I know that other judges could talk of their courts, that they've started businesses in our county, or they're employed in the county, because now they can keep a job, so they're providing a service and paying taxes, and we reunify families, and that serves a great function. For FYI '24, '25, our grants brought in $598,000 to Eaton County. What did we, what, what did that pay for? It paid for three and a half full-time employees, and 30% of the cost of the Director of Community Correction, plus it paid some of the treatment costs for the people in our program. The current grant applications that you allowed us to submit, and thank you very much for letting us submit those in the spring, we've now asked that 100% of the director cost be paid, and we've included that administrative fee that you've just adopted as a policy. So, we are hopeful that for FYI '25, '26, we will not, we will cost less to the county, which is already, in my opinion, a very negligible amount when you consider what the community corrections does, our programs do. So, what are we asking for today? I guess to get to the bottom line. We are asking that we leave 4.5 full-time employees' positions vacant. That amounts to a savings of about $347,012 in budgetary savings. Also, we ask you to consider the changes to the Child Care Fund, because that is real money of approximately $320,000 additional savings to the county. That means that what we're asking for is you adopt the budget that we've proposed, and the savings to the general fund will be roughly $647,000. Now, like I said, we've had to, we submitted the seven templates for you to go through. I know you haven't had time to do that thoroughly, but I assure you, we have gone through every department, every position, and looked at every way that we can make cuts or not fill positions, but we still have to have staff to do the things that are necessary and reasonable to meet our constitutional requirements and the requirements of the Michigan Supreme Court. These are very difficult times, and I know you're in a very hard position. If you would grant our request, this is going to be tough for us. I'm not going to lie. We're going to, staff is going to have to do more with less, but we believe we can do that if you would adopt this budget. So I thank you for your consideration this morning. Judges Pollard, Van Langaveld, and Morton are here. They are able to answer any questions. Director Akembak is here, and of course, Administrator Etzel is here, who, by the way, has put in so many hours putting all this together and continuing to run our courts without a Deputy Court Administrator, we couldn't be more thankful. So, does anybody have any questions that I could answer, or somebody else could come up and answer?
Well, thank you, thank you, Judge. I just want to thank you for putting this together for us, and you know, it took some time as well.
Would you like hard copies?
Yeah. Actually...
Hard copy? Okay.
Actually, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That was my, that was going to be my question, if it was in our, going to be in our packet.
Well, we, we have hard copies.
Okay.
Because, to be very honest, it's embarrassing to say, but I thought if I could get the PowerPoint to work, I would hand them out, and we could just go through them, slide by slide.
Um, I do, I do have a question on your, you're talking about under the Trial Courts, your Court Recorder, is that, and maybe you mentioned it, is it a position that's vacant right now that's being, that somebody else is doing, or?
No. In fact, we had to actually hire somebody to come in to help us out, because that was vacated, I believe, in May, and we were very nervous. We are posting it, but we have not had one since May, and summer's a little slower for trials, because we have to be cognizant of our citizens being jurors, and people take vacations. But if we don't have that position filled by fall, when we are full throttle with possibly all five courts, we are going to have to pay people to come in and help us, because we, we need to have that position. It's that vital.
Okay. Another question, you, look at my chicken scratch here. Juvenile Courts, the reimbursement, can you talk about that, just, you know, briefly, how that works?
Amy? Would you like to come up here? And Judge Pollard, do you want to come up? I would like the experts to speak to it, and I don't want to say anything that's false or, you know, not accurate.
Hi, everyone.
Judge Pollard.
How we doing? The reimbursement rate, as everyone's aware, or maybe this being your first year, you may not be aware, but under the Justice for Kids in Communities Act, the reimbursement rate for the juvenile courts went from 50% to 75% for in-community services. That reimbursement rate was new for some positions. So, it used to be, if you'll give me just a little bit of time to talk historically, used to be that we used to divide out our standard services in the community and intensive services in the community. Standard services were not reimbursed by the state at all. The intensive services, which did include out-of-home placement, were reimbursed at 50%. With the change in legislation, it allowed us to put anyone who... With the change in legislation, it allowed us to put anyone who was working within the community with our juveniles at a 75% reimbursement rate. When we initially did these calculations, and Ms. Baller may be able to correct me, it represented almost $700,000 in a change to our budget for reimbursement. Going from zero to 75% for some of our positions really represented a huge amount of reimbursement to this county. The purpose of that reimbursement was to allow counties to comport with 19 new statutes. We now have five mandates for every single reimbursement. Every case, I have to evaluate every kid for their risk and mental health. And so I have to, with my staff and my probation officers, over the last two years, create a number of processes and procedures in order to comport with those statutes. Otherwise, we don't get the reimbursement at all. On top of that, at, before disposition or before I do a sentencing essentially for a juvenile, we have to do a full risk and needs assessment. On top of that, I have to do quality assurances, which is data management, data collection, data reporting to the state involving a brand-new system that's mandated by the state. We also have to employ quality assurance specialists. We also have to mandate and use best practices. All of these things are new. So when we say that we have had to change the way we do business, this represents hundreds of hours of my staff's time trying to comport with the legal requirements, so this county gets 75% reimbursement. If we don't do that, we don't get it at all. And so when we're talking about the amount that we're getting back for reimbursement, the purpose of that was to give it to the courts, so that we could build out our programming and comport with those requirements. Because of the budget crisis that we're in, we aren't able to use any of those dollars. So we are comporting with these 19 new statutes with one less juvenile probation officer, one less clerk, fewer resources, and somewhere in the neighborhood of $320,000 to $700,000 less in dollars that we were supposed to be able to utilize. So when Judge Cunningham asks that you recognize the amount of that reimbursement, please recognize that the amount that we were supposed to receive back in this reimbursement exchange was supposed to go to the courts. We're still required to go and meet those mandates, but we're not asking for the dollars back, because we recognize, as the courts, the struggle that we're in. I hope that answers your question, Chairman Mott.
Yeah, it did, thank you. Commissioner Perot.
Judge, about how many cases do you have active that you have to manage right now?
My recollection is we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 275 to 300 new cases a year. Now, I want to be really clear, though, with juvenile cases, unlike with the adult criminal cases, and this bears some discussion. Juvenile cases don't have a specific timeline. I have to work with kids for as long as they need us to work with them, up to the age of 20 potentially. So we are working at rehabilitating kids while also bringing in new cases. So we may have 300 new cases a year, but we still may be working with juveniles who don't have new cases. We can work with kids anywhere from zero days, again, up to the time that they turn 20 potentially. So I, it's difficult for me to say. I could look, because we have a new data management system. I could tell you exactly how many kids we have on probation right now, if that would be helpful, but...
I was just wondering what the actual, you know, scope of the management of these per case?
Yeah.
Because you have to do so much mandated reporting and scoring, so...
It, it depends. It depends. You know, a case could have a juvenile who's low-risk and low-needs, and we have to create a very specific plan to meet those risks and needs for each and every single juvenile that we work with. We're not allowed to use templates, we're not allowed to use cookie cutter probation. Every kid gets an individualized plan based upon the assessments that we complete, and my probation officers are there to monitor each and every step of that process. So it's difficult to give a number, but I can say that that's approximately how many new cases we have. I would estimate that probably another 100 or so across the board are in some level of service with, with our probation officers, day treatment, CBT, RT, and detention.
So, so though our children that are in the youth facility also get managed through your case?
Absolutely. No one ends up in out-of-home placement without significant court supervision, intervention, and assessments.
Okay. Do you have any idea about how many we, because of the juvenile facility expansion, how many out-of-county juveniles we are managing over there?
I know Mr. Mulvaney, our director, who I'm sure would be happy to give some hard, concrete numbers for everyone if you're interested, he always, when able, takes out-of-county youth, not only to assist in other counties, but we do seek reimbursement from those counties for the bed space. So with the expansion, once we're up and running with our full staffing levels, which everybody knows has been an issue, unfortunately, once we are fully staffed, we would expect that we would be able to take on more. It's difficult for me to give you a number of how much we would be able to recuperate of our costs, but I will tell you that when we do charge for those beds, it is a significant amount every day that we do charge with respect to keeping those beds for other counties. So, and I believe we have a handful at any given time.
So, do we, do you participate in any of the needs of those out-county children that we might take in? So, or do you not have any control over it?
When they're in our programming, they're in our programming, so we provide services to them, including, as I presented a couple of months now, I think probably ago, with respect to the broad scope of services that the juvenile division provides, but everything from individualized treatment plans, individual counseling, family counseling, substance use disorder counseling, full educational services, including credit recovery, and shoot, we had someone who was at LCC getting credits while he was in our programming. So a full range of services are provided, and that is inclusive of any young people we do take from out-of-county.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to, I want to return. We got a couple more minutes of questions, but I just wanted, before I forget, so back to the reimbursement, is the administration fee, is that the 697,000 you're requesting, or is that your estimate for that reimbursement? Is that?
The 697 that Judge Cunningham spoke of?
Yeah.
I would have to...
That's not a reimbursement. What, that number is a combination of us not filling four and a half full-time employees' spots.
Oh, okay.
It's 300 and some, and then the other 300 is asking you to recognize, as Judge Pollard just explained, that that's additional money that would normally be going to the courts, that we're not asking it come to the court specifically, so it's going into the general fund. So our position is that if you adopt what we've requested, the courts have assisted in, in over $600,000 reduction of what you have to spend. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Did I say that correctly? I think I did.
Thank you. Commissioner Haskell.
I just want to quickly go to the treatment courts. You, you mentioned that 30% of the director costs are sought now in the grants, is that correct?
Right.
And then do you want to, you want to, in addition, in future years, go to 100%?
We asked for 100%.
Yeah.
In what we just submitted, and we intend to continue to do that.
Okay.
So we're hoping that that will be awarded to us.
Do you know what the dollar value of that is roughly, or?
100, is that what you said? 130,000.
Okay, great. And then for the treatment programs that we are diverting people from jail?
Yes.
Roughly annually, do you know how many people we divert from jail in those programs?
Oh, well, I would get, I did a rough estimation when I made the last presentation, and we determined that all we have to do is send two people to jail for 365 days for, you know, the maximum, and that equals the cost of what, what the out-of-pocket expense is for the county for our program. So, and we, we probably, do you have that number, Melanie? Could you come and share that off the top of your head? I'm sorry.
Yeah, because that, no, that, that's, that's great, because that's, what I'm actually trying to figure out is, like, trying to put a rough idea of what the savings is, not for your group here, but for the sheriffs, then the jail, like...
Yeah.
That, trying to kind of wrap that all together.
I mean, I realize that when we send people to jail, the sheriff can charge, but he's going to tell you, and he's smiling, they don't pay, right? I mean, you can say all you want, that a defendant is supposed to reimburse the county, but if they don't have a job, and they don't have any money, and they don't have any assets, they're not going to reimburse the county. So if we get rid of these programs, you're talking about a huge influx into the jail. Go ahead, Melanie, how many do you think that would be?
Currently, there are 96.
Hold on, Melanie, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say we're, we're up for time, but go ahead, if you can, and make it quick. I, I'm sorry, we have to do this, but we have to keep on schedule, but go ahead, I'll give you the extra minute here.
There are 96 people across our five problem-solving courts currently.
Okay.
And then for fiscal year, well, 948 total new enrollments across all programming for the PA 511-funded programs.
And you only need two of them to make...
Go full-time.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, yeah, again, if you have any questions, further questions, please write them down, and we'll, we'll get them. All right, now we're up to the prosecutor's office.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Doug Lloyd. I am your Eaton County Prosecutor. I was thinking about it last night, and I've been thinking about it since we've been offered this opportunity to sit in front of you, that for all of you, I have been complaining and explaining for as long as you've been on the board. And while I'm sure that's been enjoyable to you, I realized, for me, it's not actually been enjoyable. But I also realize that I have a great staff, and I have a great executive team that makes my office work. And so I felt that while I have been heard twice a month, if not more, for as long as you've been on this board, it might be better that you actually hear from my deputy chief and my chief assistant, because they're the forefront of what happens every day. And so how we thought we'd break this down is that I would have Adam Strong, who is my deputy chief, come up and speak to you, and then Chris Anderson, who you all know, who's my chief assistant, will speak as well. I'll finish up with a minute or two at the end. So I'll give you Adam Strong.
Hello, everybody. As Doug said, my name's Adam Strong, I'm the deputy chief assistant. I also am, right, as of next week, I'll be assigned as Judge Cunningham's docket attorney. And so what I'm going to try to talk to you about is sort of what do the attorneys in the office do? What's our kind of day-to-day life like, aside from busy and hectic? But, you know, what are our actual responsibilities? What are, what are the types of things that we do? Some people, I think, maybe think that the attorneys, well, we, we sit in our office, and then maybe sometimes we go to court, you know, we look at cases and we do trials. And that couldn't be further from the truth, of just what that actually entails. You know, one of the things that's in your packet is something I wrote about four years ago. It's the why we need more circuit court attorneys. That was back in 2021, and that really outlines everything that just a circuit court attorney does. Now, it's about nine pages long, so if you can read it, you know, when you get the time. But those nine pages, you know, just for a circuit court attorney, the same kinds of things are true for our district court attorneys, same thing is true for our juvenile attorney, the same thing is true for our economic crime attorney, and the same thing is true for our appellate attorney. And one of the things that we've seen over the last couple of years is that everyone's job in our office, all of the attorney's jobs, were, were very specialized. It doesn't quite seem that way, because we handle so many different types of cases, but within the office, there are certain people that are very good at certain types of jobs. Our appellate attorney, Christopher Candell, he is our appellate guy. There's a whole scope of rules for the appellate guy. I don't know how to do it. If he leaves tomorrow, we're scrambling to find someone to fill his position, because, you know, can I write a brief? Sure, but the, there's an entire new set of rules, an entire new set of guidelines, an entire new filing system that he knows, and he's the only one who knows it. Our juvenile attorney, Brenna, she's the same way. Everything you heard Judge Pollard talk about with our juvenile cases, all of our juvenile cases go to Brenna. And with some exceptions, Chris can cover. Of the people in our office that know how to do the juvenile cases, I know how to do enough to just barely get by, and there's about two other attorneys that could be a warm body to fill a seat and nod and smile. That's it. If Brenna leaves, or if Brenna is sick, or if Brenna takes a vacation, no one else can do that. So for the things that we do, you know, there's all these different types of hearings, there's all these different types of cases, and it's more than just that. Just in the last week, with, from Monday to 9:00 AM today, I received 151 emails that I had to go through. Now, I was also in trial this week, and that is something that we have to do. Our attorneys do all of the work for themselves, really. A lot of law firms, a lot of other lawyers, they have staff that does things for them. We have support staff, but they don't do things for the attorneys. They have all of their own responsibilities to make sure that the cases can keep moving. You'll hear from Chris Anderson, I think, about, more about that. But the attorneys, we do, we keep track of our own schedules, we run our own dockets, we generate our own warrants, we generate and write and research our own motions, we do our own notices, we do our own orders that we submit to the court. No one drafts those for us and then just hands it to us to review. The attorney themselves is, they're the ones doing that. All of our own pleadings, our exhibit lists, our witness lists, the attorneys do that themselves, and that takes time. How long does it take to issue a case? Every case is different, you know? The simplest of cases, one can think, is maybe a drunk driving. At minimum, that will take 30 minutes. We have to go through, we get the, the request, we have to look at it, we have to first see if we have everything. Do we have all the reports? Do we have all the videos? Do we have all the evidence and the documents? I can tell you that most of the time, that isn't the case. Sometimes things are just lost in translation, they're lost through records, they're, it's just a matter of getting them sent to us. But a lot of times, there's things that we need them to do. Then, once we have that, we have to review all of that. We have to review the defendant's history, we have to look at what charges we think are appropriate, what charges can we issue, what charges should we issue? That leads to discussion. Then we have to actually issue it. The attorney generates the document, they generate the charging language, decide what to issue, notify the staff of what they've issued, that the warrant is now ready to be sworn to, enter into the system. What the case is, why we did it, what we should do, that's just the beginning. Then the case moves through the system, through the court system, and it then, even at the end of the court system, or not really the court system, rather, but even at the end of the case, post-sentencing, we still have probation violations. We have the specialty courts that you've heard about. Our attorneys are present for all of that. We have bond violations, things that come up during the case before trial, where there's a violation, our attorneys are present for that. They have to handle that as well. That's a OWI case, maybe 30 minutes, and that is as fast as it could possibly be, that's a simple one. Anything more complex than that, the time goes up exponentially. A murder is going to take weeks, but just your regular felony cases, which is a weird thing to kind of say, a regular felony case, right? That's going to take hours. During those hours, the work doesn't stop. During those hours, emails are coming in, calls are coming in, we have court hearings. This last week, I actually tried to keep track a little bit, which is something that, as a government attorney, we don't have to bill for our time, thank God. But, so I tried to keep track of just kind of what time was taking. And so for this trial that I had, in which two counts of fleeing and eluding, two counts of resisting and obstructing, and then frankly, kind of stupid slow-speed chase for seven minutes down M-50, where our out-county patrol assisted Eaton Rapids in the case, that had, I put in 25 hours in the last week of prep time, 25 actual hours of prep time for the trial. That's not including issuing the case, that's not including all of the hearings, the preliminary examination, all the work that the other attorneys did on the case. Just preparing for the trial was 25 hours, and I had the rest of my responsibilities during the week to do that. It didn't happen during the regular workday. It happens after hours. It happens before hours. You know, the people that have worked with me know that when I have a trial, I tend to come in, I try to beat Connie sometimes, it's happened every now and then, but I'm usually in here about between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, prepping for things. And the types of preps that we have to do are things that only the attorney can do. It's reviewing, in this one case, which was, again, a relatively simple felony case, I had five witnesses, and I had seven exhibits... had five witnesses, and I had seven exhibits. There were twenty-seven total videos, at a total of ten hours of time to go through, to watch, to try to figure out, and I, you can't do it. We don't have the time to do it. So I have to pick, I have to choose, I have to see what I want, I have to review the videos, I have to edit the videos, I have to make the exhibits, to make sure that they're admissible, to make sure that I can display them in court, to make sure that they're evidence. That's something the attorney has to do. We have to prepare the witnesses, we have to meet with the witnesses, we have to generate all the different documents. All of that takes time. It was a day and a half trial, and this is a simple one. This is not a complex case. The complex ones, the time goes exponentially up after that. So this is what our attorneys are dealing with, and that's when we have a trial, but all of the multitude of other hearings that we have, that same type of thing happens. We don't have trials that often, but we have a lot of different hearings all the time. But it's not just the hearing. Every hearing that you're in, you have to spend more time preparing for the hearing. Over that same week, where I'm preparing for trial, I also had my docket responsibilities. I had Judge Cunningham's status conference day on Friday. Over that week, I handled and had a hand in, and had to review at least a hundred cases, separate cases, through different discussions with other attorneys, through different discussions in the office, through negotiations with defense attorneys, through contact with court staff to try to get adjournments, with contact with court staff and other defense attorneys to coordinate timing, probation departments, both circuit court and district court emailing, discussions with them, police officers, victims, witnesses, all of that. Well, a hundred is a, probably a generous, or a light estimate, rather, and that's one week. And that's not just me. That's not just me as the deputy chief assistant, that is every attorney in the office. They're dealing with the same thing. And I had the opportunity this last week, well, didn't have the opportunity, I made the opportunity, yet another thing that takes time, to talk to all of our attorneys, to go in and, and sit down with them for a second, to say, what is your workload like? What is your caseload like? How are you doing? We have ten attorneys right now. That is the lowest level we've been at since 2014. That is not enough. It is just sadly not enough. We should have, I believe, seven more for the caseload studies. And the reason for that is, right now, if anyone is sick, if anyone goes on a vacation, if anyone has a trial, or they have a hearing that they have to prep for, or they're at a training, anything that takes them away from their individual court responsibilities, that work continues on. That work never stops. The cases keep coming in, the emails keep coming in, the court hearings are still scheduled, we can't push them. So especially for the docket attorneys, the docket rolls on. If anyone is gone for any reason whatsoever, someone else has to cover. And as I had the chance to talk to all of the attorneys, I was struck by what they said, a couple of them. Our newest attorney, you know, I asked her, have you taken a vacation? She's been here fourteen months. She has not taken a day of vacation in fourteen months. She actually said, well, I took my mom to the ER, and that doesn't count. She hasn't taken a day of vacation in fourteen months. Another attorney, when I talked with her about that, she said that the, her quote struck with me, because it was, I don't want to burn out, but I don't want to come back to even more. If we're gone, the work just piles up and piles up. When I asked our youngest attorney why she hasn't taken a day of vacation, she said, I don't know what day would be good to take. That's one day that she can't take off. We have three attorneys in training next week, we have to cover for them, and their work that they need to do remains, so we don't have time right now to look ahead. You've heard the word triage already today, I think, and I'm sure you'll hear it more, because everybody is saying the same thing, everybody's asking for the same thing, please don't cut us. We are at, below the level of adequate staffing that we need to have right now, well below that. We've been below it for a decade. We're especially below it now. Especially when you consider that our job is relatively unique in the sense that it isn't just you learn how to do the job, and then you move to another one. You learn the job by doing the job. As new situations arise, and new problems arise, new cases arise, you learn by handling those, and you generate that institutional knowledge. If anyone leaves, that institutional knowledge is gone. In the ten, or, sorry, in the, from 2012, when I was here, started here, until 2020, January 2021, I believe we lost a total of six attorneys. From 2021 until today, we've lost eleven attorneys. We have, six out of ten attorneys in our office have six years or fewer of experience. And that's somewhat specialized experience, but it's, they don't know what they don't know. You learn it by doing it, and you can't teach someone that. So if we lose anybody, then it starts over, and we have to train them again, and they have to try to learn again. And that just compounds more and more and more, and it makes more work for everybody. The, everybody works through lunch, everybody works on weekends, everybody works after work. We don't get compensated in any way for any of it. And the thing that struck with me the most, and why, you know, we're coming here today, and I'm asking you, myself, on behalf of myself, and on behalf of the attorneys in my office, that, don't, we can't lose anybody else, because we don't do this job for the pay, we never have, and we kind of know that going into it, but at the same time, it's, we don't get thanked a lot. I've been doing this for thirteen years, I've had countless victim cases, I think I've gotten three thank-you letters in thirteen years. We don't, people don't generally like us, the cops don't necessarily like us, sometimes when we, you know, tell them some things that they don't want to hear, the courts may not like us for some reasons at certain points in time, and we're kind of used to that, that's the nature of our adversarial system. But at the same time, every one of the attorneys that I talk to, they want to do better. That was the thing that struck with me the most. They want to do better. They know that they're treading water, they know that they feel like they're drowning, and they want to do better. They want to be able to devote more time to their cases. They want to be able to make sure that they can look ahead to a case and work ahead on a case, instead of just handling the cases for that week, making it, surviving the week, and then trying the next week and doing the same thing over and over again. And we owe to our constituents, that's what our office is, we represent not individuals, but the people of the state of Michigan and the county of Eaton. We owe it to them to be able to give their cases the time. And that doesn't just go for victims, that goes for the community, that when we have cases that don't necessarily have a victim, like a fleeing and eluding and a resisting and obstructing, but it affected well over a hundred people that day on M-50, as they had to pull off and make sure that they didn't get involved in this chase, we owe it to them to be able to devote the time necessary to do their case right. And we owe it to the defendant to make sure that their case is handled properly, that we protect their rights as well. We owe it to the courts to make sure that they don't get backlog, and that things go smoothly there. We can't do that without people. Everybody in the office does the job because they love the work, they love what the job is, and it's, you know, we don't want to do other types of law, we like the service. We like the things that come with the service. Yesterday, I grabbed our appellate attorney, and we did a mock trial in Judge Morton's courtroom for the youth academy explorers, kids who basically, it's like wannabe police summer camp kind of thing, it's, it's seventeen-year-olds, and we did a mock trial for them. That kind of community outreach, we're all involved in committees, we're all involved in organizations, things like that to, for the advancement of the law and the advancement of the community. That takes time, and it's time that we devote on the side. So, you know, the, the last thing really that I have to say is that we want to continue. We want to be here. Everyone in the, of the attorneys that are in the office is here because we love the work, and we like the people that are in the office, we like our team. We feel bad if we have to leave and someone else has to cover. We can't afford to lose anybody else, because then it will only compound that problem more and more. We won't be able to take any time for any reason whatsoever, and burnout happens. With what we deal with, burnout happens. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Mott, Commissioners. Again, you all know me, I've talked to you, my name is Chris Anderson, I'm the chief assistant prosecutor. I think we're all, and I am keenly aware of the county's fiscal crisis, and I come to you today with a full appreciation of the tough choices that you would have made so far and have to make in the coming weeks. You know, I honestly wasn't sure where to begin in my quest to explain to you what we do and why we cannot sustain the proposed funding cuts. In the materials submitted to you for review, you will find several attachments. Prosecutor Lloyd is the chief law enforcement officer in the county, a constitutional office, officer, and our office performs over five hundred mandated duties. We do so so many more things than prosecute cases. Over the last twenty years, we've returned more than ten million dollars to victims in this community through the economic crimes unit. Money that would be ordered on a criminal case's restitution, we actually collect it, and we actually make those victims whole. We've done so while diverting thousands of individuals from the criminal justice system. Our two-employee child support unit has processed more than ten thousand cases in the past twelve years. And it has resulted in orders totaling more than four hundred thousand dollars a month of child support obligations to the people of Eaton County, to residents of Eaton County. And our one-attorney appellate unit is beginning the process of fighting for justice for the victims of the six, of six murderers convicted in this county and sentenced to life without parole after our Supreme Court said that those premeditated murderers deserved a second chance at freedom. And this morning, as I'm sitting here in this meeting, I get the, the wonderful news that that one attorney appellate unit managed to stave off the extension of that opinion about juvenile lifers in the Deneen Desharm case, the cold case murder here, where they asked, the state appellate defendants' office asked to extend that opinion, the Supreme Court denied that this morning. You know, I expect every presentation you hear today is likely to explain how the proposed cuts, which in our case are thirteen point eight percent of our, our budget, and fourteen percent of our staff, cannot be sustained. In our case, that isn't just hyperbole, it's the reality. The work we do is mandated, critical, and the decisions we have to make have real consequences on the liberty of members of our community. You know, as he noted, Prosecutor Lloyd has spent a decade explaining to this board that our office is understaffed. For the better part of that decade, we were told that there was no ability to add staff, and on one occasion, we were told that we had to generate revenue to avoid the loss of an attorney. We did that. We expanded the use of, of criminal diversion to generate additional funding. We've lived on continuation budgets that have brought along with them reductions in benefits, stagnant wages in comparison to our peers, for years. We're understaffed, underpaid, and tired, and the proposed cuts further reducing our staff and case capacity would move our office well below a serviceable level as it relates to our mandated functions. Our perpetual shortage of funded staff positions results in excessive workloads that require our attorneys to work nights and weekends, as a rule, not an exception, work that they do for free because we're exempt. The crushing workload combined with reduced benefits and lagging salaries has created circumstances in which we've been unable to fill all of our funded attorney positions since 2021. And we've never been able to realize the benefit of this board's allotment of an additional attorney, attorney in 2023. We have never been able to fill that position. We had, for about a week, before an attorney started, we had actually hired the position, and then we lost another attorney. The workload and compensation has led our office to lose nearly a century of attorney experience since 2020, as Mr. Strong commented. The losses result in our inability to operate at a serviceable level. We've lost six attorneys to Livingston County in the Attorney General's offices, positions that offered each and every one of them tremendous compensation increases and a decreased workload. In fact, half of them now, who I still keep contact with, make more than your elected prosecutor as line attorneys within the Attorney General's office, with no managerial responsibility. The work we do demands, the work demands and lagging compensation has also led to a tremendous turnover and the corresponding loss of institutional knowledge within our support staff. There's not a single job in our office that you can simply walk in off the street and pick up in a week. Our jobs are unique, the demands are great, and the consequences of errors are permanent. Recruiting qualified sta, support staff has been extremely difficult, as we struggle to draw in applicants that have the ability to work in the office, much less have any experience that is remotely relevant to our work. While we can explain the job all day long in an interview, we cannot really paint a picture of what the job entails. It takes a special person to see the horrible things our support staff sees and choose to come back the next day to do it again. Our support staff is truly the backbone of our office, and frankly, I have no idea why they stay. Other than because they believe they are improving the world in Eaton County, and because they appreciate that Prosecutor Lloyd and I and the executive team will always fight for them. They're busy, they're young to the office, and they're working their tails off to do what we ask of them. Beyond entering over thirty-five hundred cases a year, answering calls from emotional and angry members of the community, constantly having their work interrupted to assist people at the window, our support staff is responsible for numerous mandated functions. They provide services to victims, establish child support, issue writs and subpoenas, provide discovery, maintain our dockets so we actually show up in court where we're supposed to. They file pleadings, they do all sorts of things, and they do so for a mountain less than they can make working for the state, for less than they can make rolling a joint at a dispensary, and for about what they can make working at McDonald's with a similar benefit package, and a free meal each shift. Each of our support staff members have specific responsibilities and perform unique jobs. There isn't, there's a very little duplication of job responsibilities, we don't have redundancy. Our support staff already triage their work, they have, they have a hand in each of those seven thousand cases we always talk about. Those are open cases, by the way, I think. And anytime they get caught up with more, more work arrives, and when they're fully staffed, that's when they're fully staffed. Taking a vacation or engaging in self-care when they're ill means pushing work to their fellow legal assistants, because they, it can't wait. We're currently short two support staff, which this board has voted to cut the funding for, one in the criminal division, one in the child support unit. We can't continue to operate the child support unit with one individual. It is a very specialized position that frankly, since February, has been, been done by one, one employee, because she's put in a ton of work. She's also been gone for the last month, which means we had nobody in the office do any of that work. Losing an assistant in the criminal division will be brutal, but I think we can make do, as we've recommended in the, on our proposal. As I prepared for today, I, I've reflected on something the Prosecutor Lloyd asked me about interns we have in our office, we have a couple interns, and they're exceptionally bright, and the amount of time it takes to train new attorneys on my part. While spending time with the interns has been a challenge, it has also allowed me to take weight off the shoulders of attorneys by clearing backlog cases and screening. My hope is that they will decide to stick around in a career in prosecution. I, I don't know that I can, we can say over and over again that we don't work a forty-hour week, but we don't. Triage-ing cases is no way to do business. Every member of our staff appreciates the gravity of our responsibilities, the community and victims are looking to us to help them and make their community safer. The risks of failure in our position are real and are severe. We only get one chance to prosecute a case, only get one chance to deliver justice for a victim, and when you triage, you dramatically increase the risk of an error occurring. We rarely have time to file motions that could be beneficial, don't have time to properly prep cases, and don't have adequate time to attend trainings. We don't have time to properly do our job. Our attorneys struggle to get away, they struggle to have a, a healthy work-life balance. You've heard about the attorney that hasn't taken a day off in fourteen months. I think we would all agree that's absurd, but I appreciate and understand and relate to her feelings. We walk the line of burnout because we don't have a choice with our current staffing workload. We have no one to turn to but ourselves to complete our work. There's no roster of private attorneys appointed to appoint to assist us, our cases can't be prosecuted by retained counsel, it is us, we are all we have. Tuesday night, I sampled the eleven, I sampled eleven capital cases, which means they have a life, a punishment of up to life, that we currently have open in our office. Of those eleven capital cases that we're prosecuting, two are being defended by retained attorneys. Of those 11 capital cases that we're prosecuting, two are being defended by retained attorneys, eight are being defended by assigned overflow roster attorneys, and one by the public defender's office. I don't say that to be critical of the public defender's office, I say it to make the point. We are, we have no one to turn to. Our attorneys have to put the time in. This entire presentation, the entire work, the entire packet I put together, very little was done during staff hours. I'm 60 hours into this week already because I didn't have the opportunity to complete my regular work and also prepare for this budget presentation for you. And I did it because it's important. I feel the weight and the burden of the 22 employees that are upstairs, that are relying on me and the prosecutor to save their positions. Michigan Supreme Court has defined a serviceable level as the minimum budgetary appropriation at which statutally mandated functions can be fulfilled. A function funded at a serviceable level will be carried out in a barely adequate manner, but it will be carried out. Our denial rate has slowly risen from 25% on average historically to between 35 and 40% a month because frankly, we've increased the number of cases we deny because we just don't have time. That isn't a policy decision, that's a survival decision, and it means that we are not, we are not operating at a serviceable level. The proposed reductions of our budget will result in the office not carrying out mandated functions, operating below a serviceable level. I respectfully request that you reconsider the recommended reduction of funding for the office and that you appropriate sufficient funds to maintain the two vacant APA positions and one of the vacant legal assistant positions at a minimum. I also urge you, as I said to you before, to appropriate sufficient funds to provide a competitive compensation package that will actually allow us to attract and retain qualified staff. Thank you.
I'm sure I'm at my end, but I thought it was important that you actually heard from the individuals that are there putting the 60 to 80 hours a week, and if you have questions.
What are your questions? Any questions from commissioners? None?
Really? Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you, prosecutor Lloyd, and your office. Next up is the sheriff's office.
Morning, Sheriff Mott and commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity for me to speak this morning. I come before you today with a message that is both urgent and hopeful. Urgent because we are in the middle of one of the most difficult budget years this office has ever faced, but hopeful because I believe there is a brighter path forward that still honors our obligation to the people we serve, particularly those in the Elk County areas. Truly, the number-one purpose of government is to protect the people. As your sheriff, your constitutionally-elected chief law enforcement officer of the county, I am responsible directly to the people of Eaton County. No other chief of police or state police official is directly elected by the people to serve and protect them. As sheriff, I am a peace officer first and strongly desire to continue to perform the duties of my office, as I have since 2013. I not only have a constitutional and statutory mandate to do so, but also an ethical and moral responsibility to the people of Eaton County. You have a form which was sent requesting me to detail the services we perform. Please review that and adhere to what I have said. Many are listed, but it's simply impossible to list all the direct services we provide. Deputies have different hats, they wear different hats, minister, marriage counselor, medical assistant, so on and so forth. That's what we do. But we provide far more than that. Nobody provides the critical services which we provide, and no comparison can be made. We are the physical shield of protection for our residents, and we stand strong. As a barrier between violent criminals and predators of society, we are the line between lawlessness and chaos and safety and peace. Our deputies lay their very lives on this line to protect people they don't even know. We train exhaustively with a citizens protections-first mindset, preparing to save lives of our children, teachers subjected to an active violence incidents in a school or our citizens at any location. You may recall last year, our brave lieutenant and deputy stopped a man who stated intention was to harm members of the family in Charlotte and shoot it out with the police. He tried to murder our deputies by opening fire, but they were steadfast in the face of death and heroically stopped the threat. Perhaps you remember one of our deputies who located a stopped man who had stabbed and murdered a man in Windsor Township and then attacked her. Our deputy bravely held the line and stopped him from killing anyone else. Just this past month, our deputies chased a parole felon down and after he had just raped another victim, and we arrested him, then obtained a full confession to this horrific crime. I could give examples all day of our deputy serving with a courageous heart of line, risking everything for the people of this county. Yes, these are services that are simply beyond comparison to any others. Perhaps that is why the government has found it appropriate to fund law enforcement to the degree it has. We have heard voters, they did not support the public safety millage because they didn't want the increase in their taxes. That was disappointing, yes, but we've taken it seriously and we've responded with action. No complaints. We understand that our residents are watching their wallets, just as we are watching every dollar in this budget. And despite the failure of this millage, we also heard something else loud and clear from our community. They still expect road patrol. They still expect help when they call 911, and they still expect to see a deputy show up, especially in areas where we are the only protection. I want to walk you through what we've done, what's at stake, and what we're asking. Let's talk about the cuts. The board asked to reduce costs by 1.9 million. That was a big ask, and it came with a real potential of eliminating an Elk County Patrol completely. But we didn't just meet that goal, we exceeded it. We trimmed $2 million from our budget. That's 21 positions eliminated. Nine road deputies, two sergeants, one detective, two records clerk, six cadets, and one crime analysis. These aren't just numbers on a spreadsheet, these are people. I refer to them as family. These are services, these are shifts we can no longer fill with brave responders and criminal investigators we can no longer complete. And yet, we made these reductions so we could keep the core agency intact and continue to serve every part of Eaton County, even if it's in a limited way. What's at stake now? With those cuts, we preserve the ability to maintain reduced operations in our Elk County areas. This is not the service level we want to provide. It's not what the public is used to, but it is a presence, and in times like these, the presence of our deputies is powerful. Without our footprint, some townships will go completely unserved. They don't have local police, they depend on us. With no deputies on the road in these areas, calls will go unanswered or significantly reduced. Michigan State Police, as professional as they are, are not built or staffed to be the first line of defense in our county. They have never been the primary law enforcement agency. That's our job, and we still want to do that job even under these constrained budget. I've spoken with township leaders, residents, and business owners. They may not have all voted for the millage, but they absolutely expect service. They want to see patrol cars. They want to know we are out there to respond when they need help. So we've made the hard decisions, and we've done the hard work to ensure that. If we're given the green light, we can keep a scaled-back but functioning road patrol, however limited it may be. Is it going to be lean? Absolutely. Are response times going to increase? Absolutely. Will we have to prioritize only the most urgent calls? Again, yes. But the point is, we'll still be providing critical protection under the day we can again provide 24/7 coverage that the residents of this great county deserve. We'll still be protecting families, responding to crashes, helping with mental health crises, and assisting our fire and EMS partners. We'll still be a presence in townships that otherwise have none. So here's what I'm asking. Help us provide this reduced road patrol structure. We've already gone deeper than requested cuts, we've absorbed the impact. We have lost so many excellent deputies, now let's stabilize what's left. Let's preserve a basic public safety footprint in rural Eaton County, let's hold the line for now, so that when a resident calls, we can still say, "Help is on the way." Because we cut further, that may no longer be true, and once those services are gone, once those positions are lost, they don't come back easily. You don't flip a switch and rebuild patrol unit overnight, keeping experienced deputies I'll close with this. I'm asking the commissioners here today to start thinking about a law enforcement millage. I don't know when that can be accomplished, whether it's this year or next year. I think it's necessary to restore the road patrol that we used to have years ago, and it's going to be up to everybody in this room today to get this through. We're not toned after the county's fiscal reality. We're in it with you, we've made the hard calls, we've cut deep. What we're fighting for now is to keep Eaton County safe, not just in the cities or townships that can afford the contract for police protection, but in every square mile of this county, from Charlotte to Chester, from Delta Township to Sunfield. Fund us much as you can because lives may depend on your decisions. We owe that to our residents, we owe it to the deputies still showing up every day, and we owe it to the spirit of service that this office was built on. We're not here to restore what was. We're here to protect what's left and to rebuild when the time is right. Thank you for your continued partnership, your hard work, and your willingness to listen. Thank you.
Commissioner Droschel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sheriff Wright, for your statement this morning. There's a perception in our community that state police were just going to fill in all the gaps, and I've discussed this with Senator Cook, but what's the reality of that?
Well, I'm not a mathematician, but they got 18 troopers, from what I've been told, for three counties for 24/7 service. So that leaves Eaton County two troops per shift. Response times are going to be really slow. I don't know how they're dealing with it. I don't see the state police reports, I don't see the state police call record, how many calls they take, how many calls are just done by phone calls. I don't know that information. I couldn't tell you that answer. But in reality, there are people in this county are not getting the service they're used to.
Thank you. Commissioner Haskell.
Thank you, Sheriff, for the presentation. I'm actually quite surprised with some of the numbers and the fact that you cut a little deeper than the recommendations that came through. So with the board recommendations, which were just under $2 million, you're saying that you can cut a little over $2 million and still maintain some presence of county road patrol?
$2,014,000, what our cut was. Yes, I will still have four deputies and two sergeants. I can run probably a day shift and an afternoon shift, but very limited service for two deputies and one sergeant per shift.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because as we were making those cuts, it felt like it was the end of non-contracted patrol.
So did I.
Yeah. So I guess kudos to your team for being able to find a way to make it work. I don't know how you guys did it, but...
I've got a great executive team. They're awesome.
So you're saying you would keep on, your recommendation or desires to have six deputies for Elk County Road Patrol?
Two sergeants, two deputies, yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner, excuse me, Nicole Christensen.
Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate that. I did have a question. Do we have any form of idea of what's going to happen with animal control? I know Christie's literally down to herself right now, but...
We're allocated to have the shelter and three animal control officers, but I only have one, and she maintains the building.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff. And next up, and for the last, for elected officials, do we have the Drain Office here? I don't, I'm not seeing them here.
Just email them to let them know that they were on deck.
Have we gotten a response?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah? Anybody want to take a five-minute break or 10-minute break? Five minutes is a little short, but... Oh, okay. No, no, pause that. Drain Office is here, so...
I'm Richard Wagner, Eaton County Drain Commissioner, and we're here for the budget. And my understanding, you're looking for 103,000, 113,000 dollars in cuts. So I've got a planned program. We're going to farm out the assessing roles to a firm for, it's going to be around a little over 100,000, and it'll be paid by the landowners that, a very minimal per parcel to cover the cost. So that position will be eliminated. So that's very, that's the cut we're able to make because we're running on a very fine line of our duties that are state-mandated, and we don't have much manpower for the amount of drains we have. 650 drains, roughly 1,200 to 1,500 miles of drain that we have to maintain, and we can't take any more cuts than what I was just offered for this position of doing assessing. can't take any more cuts than what I was just offered for this position of doing assessing. So that's my plan. Any questions?
Commissioner Gene Whitaker.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. I've seen and witnessed and heard today about a very strong kind of sense of teamwork and all-hands-on-deck attitude and value that staff has in every department. And I'm just wondering, in Drain Office, how does that work? I mean, how do you support one another and like, do you, do you help in certain functions when there's low staffing or...
I'm helping in every situation to, I just took over the bank drain now, so I'm in charge of the bank inter-county drain. So, because all the, everything's where I'm at, because I own a house there and I got a $14,780 assessment on a property that I own in there. So I'm able to take that over now and make decisions all the way through the project. So we got that project, the Hobart, the Lee, the Hedrick. I mean, we got a lot of projects coming ahead. And I oversee any problem, anything we got to change. I just signed a whole bunch of change orders before I come here. So that's where we're at with, there's a lot of, the Drain Commission is really hard to explain of the, what is done, because every day it changes. You know, you could have a truck wreck to a semi-flipped, leaking fuel to a drain plugged by trees or, or just a lack of maintenance of so far into the woods that nobody ever went back and seen. So we're constantly moving to try to keep the flow of the water moving at all times. And that's a big job.
Any other questions for Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Drosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Richard, for being here. When we contract services, and I'm talking about construction, because I understand that, but when we contract services as opposed to utilizing staff, is there a real savings in that?
Big savings. I would say 70%. Like I have one guy that works one day a week, and he's, he does enough work for basically five days of work in one day, and he's saving about, I would say, 75 to 80,000 dollars a year. And his total wages are only 23,000 dollars a year to do what he does.
So he's earning less than what a full-time position would be? Or is he contracted out to others and that's where he makes up the difference?
I can't hear you.
Okay. I'll re-ask the question. So he would be making less at what he does than what we would be paying a full-time position here?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You have no benefits to pay. He pays, he pays, you don't have to pay his health or anything. All you're paying is a 1099, and that's it.
Well, that leads me to my next question then. Do we need staff in your office if we can contract for services?
Do we need them?
That was my question.
We do need them.
And the duties our staff, current staff performs are what?
He is soil erosion inspector.
But we have how many staff in your office right now?
Counting him, four and a half.
Okay. So again, regarding contracted services, do we need four and a half people in your office if we're going to continue to contract services?
We actually need more than that. Well, I called Inglewood County and they got, they got 22 people in their office.
Well, but we're not Inglewood County.
I know it, but we're bigger than Eaton County. We have more drains.
Okay, but my question again, do we need those staff members if we are going to continue to contract services?
Actually, we need another administrative, administrative person for assistant. We need another one of them to help the load of all the calls coming in from the bank, worrying about their assessment, and you can't get them off the phone, and that person can't do the job, because they're on the phone dealing with their questions that never end. They're constantly, every day. I mean, since I was just over there, we probably had five.
The reason I'm asking this is because I get calls from constituents that can't get hold of you or people in your office to get answers. So either we have adequate staffing and they're not able to respond, or we have inadequate staffing and they can't respond. I don't know what's going on there.
If they call the office and the right number, they will, Deana will call me if that person wants to be called back, and I'll call them back.
Apparently, that's not been the case.
It's a no-brainer. It's, it's, she's there, and if, there's a lot of people who say they call, and I've never heard of them. And we have a log that every call is logged in on a spreadsheet, time, date, and what the problem is.
All right. Commissioner Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Drain Commissioner, I looked over your historical data and the soil erosion enforcement officer. I looked back over a decade from what I could find, and we were averaging about 12,000, you know, right in there, 10,000, 12,000 dollar in fees or fines, however you wanted to define it, for that position. But now it's reduced.
Well, it was reduced due to COVID.
So are the people getting smarter and you're teaching them, or we're just not...
No, COVID took a lot of the building down.
Can I speak to that?
I just wanted answered. I don't, I don't care who answers.
Well, he runs the soil erosion program.
So I do the soil erosion and...
Yep.
I'm Marcus. I'm the Deputy Drain Commissioner for Soil Erosion. The lack of fines on that end is more of a broad education to the homeowners and to the property owners doing the projects. Tim and myself, the contractor that does the soil erosion inspections with me, we find it easier to educate the public on the needs and the rules and the regulations of the soil erosion permit, as opposed to just keep constantly hitting people with fines and, you know...
Okay.
Collecting money like that.
So correct me if I'm wrong, you just said the other person that you contract out?
Yep, that's, that's the one Richard was talking about. He works one day a week, and he, like Richard said, he does about the work of...
He does, he does the soil erosion enforcement?
He does. He's a contractor for that portion of it, yes.
Then... And then I have one other question about assessments, right? You said this individual's going to do assessments. If this individual does assessments, and I'm trying to look for the right word here, you know, people want to dispute them, or people got concerns about the high assessments nowadays, right?
Right.
And they can't get through to you and the, and the office. Do you really expect there to be more calls or less calls?
We, we don't really have any problems with the assessments, because you only get that one day of review to contest your assessment, and that's it. It's over with.
Yeah, that, that's statutory, right?
Right.
Yeah. So the only, only thing I'm going to say, Mr. Drain Commissioner, is we are, we are public servants, right? And I fully understand you got to do what statutory requirement, right? But I feel, right, and I know my constituents feel, that we owe them more than statutorily required, okay? So when, I know my, my constituents have one day to come and complain about their assessment, but I think we should go above and beyond just for optics and just for communication. This is more of a statement and a question, so you don't have to prepare yourself. We owe it to our constituents to do better communication, not only at your level, my level, everybody. We, we got to communicate with them better than what we have been doing.
I understand.
And when they get, when they get a letter in the mail, says...
They don't. We hear that a lot.
Okay, okay. Well, when they get assessed, 10, 20, 30, I know this gentleman right here, he's going to tell me about 40,000, I believe it's 40,000 dollar assessment, you know, like, that's a sort of a shocker, right?
Is that Mr. Billy?
And we just got to do better. What I'm saying is, is we got to do better.
But there's no changing after that day of review.
I fully understand that. Okay.
You all the talking you want, but you cannot change it.
Just, just, just a reminder, we're getting a little off, but just a reminder, this is about budget. Are there any questions about budget for the Drain Commissioner's office? Commissioner Christensen.
I just had a couple of questions on page 162. Under the summary of new development items, it talks about the new software programs. You had stated that a new GIS-based SESC tracking and inspection online system had been implemented. So I'm kind of curious at what cost this held, and if it's more efficient, as you state, then I'm guessing we can deplete the job of the person that was doing this now that there's software that does it?
Well, Marcus is going to speak, because he works with it.
So, so I'm not familiar with the cost of the project, but you can't deplete the person. It doesn't do the inspections for you. The old system that we had, you would input the information three different times. You would bring a paper file with you, then you would come back and enter it in the Excel spreadsheet, and you would enter it in a different electronic file. So the new system we have is based off of running it off of a tablet or a phone, and anybody that works in the Drain Office can pull that inspection up. So our Drain Inspector, if he's out on the site and says, "Well, what's going on here?" he can look it up. There's no paper file involved anymore with that. We keep a paper file in the office of the initial application, and other than that, everything is online on that system.
Okay. And then one other question, touching on a question that Commissioner Drosia had asked. Do you have an actual county-issued cellphone that your constituents can get a hold of you on?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Cole, right?
The first part of your presentation, you mentioned that you were going to farm out the assessing of each drain, and the 113,000 dollar savings to your department was going to go to an increase on our drain.
It'll be a few dollar...
Yeah, well, what's a few dollar? Because I know that I'm in Carrier Creek, and several, several of my constituents are in Carrier Creek, and we get already two assessments. So is my phone going to start ringing off the hook because they think that they just got a new increase?
Well, it's going to be like rolled right into the...
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to notice it. They read the bills, they call me.
We're only talking a couple of dollars.
It's, it's a...
It's only a couple of dollars?
It's a $2 to $3 assessment fee per parcel, depending on the parcel size and, and the land use of it, is what it is.
Okay.
It's built right into our contract that we have written up.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you have the state law behind you to...
Right.
To do any increase.
Yeah, Inglewood County does it, Washington State does it, and I'm not sure of the rest of them.
Okay. I just wanted to know...
Yep.
Because I have people who read their tax bills and then call me, and they definitely want an answer, so I'm going to be able to give them an answer.
Yep, it'll be a $2 to $3 fee per parcel...
Okay.
...for the assessments.
I just didn't want any surprises here.
I got, I got a question. So currently, there are six FTEs, concluding you, and you mentioned, and we reduced it by two. You mentioned four and a half FTEs. What...
I don't know who's talking here.
Up here.
Okay.
So currently, there are six FTEs, concluding you.
There's...
We reduced it by two, or recommend, and so, but, and you said 4.5 FTEs in your office.
Right. That's all we, all we have right now.
It's, it's Richard, myself, Deana, and John.
And then Tim part time.
And then Tim that we contract.
Okay.
That was the half that he was referring to.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we were initially going to take a half-hour lunch at some point. I don't know. That concludes the elected portion of this. Do you want to just take a 10-minute break and then go into externals and then not do the half-hour lunch and just make an earlier day? Because we're, we're way ahead of schedule. So that's my recommendation, but whatever you guys want to do. 10-minute break and then continue on and forget about the half-hour lunch? Okay.
The next two departments are on...
Okay, okay. Let's take a 10-minute break. All right, let's get started again. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the next portion of Departments, and we're gonna start with the equalization and then public defender. I didn't realize before break that lunch was already here, so we'll do those two. We'll break for lunch, and then we'll get back to the rest of our meeting. So, equalization, Tim?
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I appreciate that. A little bit about the history of the equalization department. If anybody doesn't know, I have been the Director for the equalization department for over 21 years, so I do know the history pretty good. At one time, we did have nine full-time employees. We're down to six full-time employees, and one position has been vacant since October of last year. So now, we're currently down to five full-time positions plus one contractor. In 2008 through 2010, during the recession that took place, when SEVs and taxable values were reduced pretty substantially at that time, we did have some reductions in the office, and we had to become more efficient. So at that time, then, that's at the point when we had an appraiser retire. We replaced that person that retired with a contract appraiser doing field work for us, that does an excellent job for that particular position. And if those cuts weren't made, we would've had to make some further cuts in the department. So that was quite helpful. We became more efficient by putting more things on the website. As far as data, we have like the equalization book that's posted online, the tax rates that we work with the local treasurers in the 22 units. We post those online, sales data like sales maps, PA 116s. We also went to a electronic drawing program that we use now, which is a lot more accurate and a lot more efficient as well. And we also use an online service, sales service. We've been using that for about four or five years now for commercial sale, commercial industrial sales, which is quite helpful as far as getting income data and other sales information as well. A little bit about the department. We are mandated through the General Property Tax Act. We assist the Board of Commissioners in equalizing the property assessments on a countywide basis. In conformance with state guidelines, the department does annual sales and appraisal studies. These studies are set to change the value for each class of property in the 22 units. In Eaton County, values cannot be increased without a properly done equalization study each year. The department assists local assessing officers in the listing and valuation of properties for tax purposes, and the use of valuation standards and any tax exemption questions, which do come up quite a bit. We also provide assistance with large MTT appeals when needed. We work with a lot of the municipalities that don't have experience with complex commercial industrial appraisals when there are tax appeals. Behind the scenes, we are working with them. We also recommend attorneys for those cases sometimes, and also review the appraisals for the other side. One big case, if it gets reduced, a large industrial or commercial case can reduce the budget one percent. We also review tax rates for like local treasurers to make sure headly rollbacks are calculated properly than tax bills, which we're very busy with the summer taxes right now. The property description staff handles splits and combinations, applications for local units. They have to know the Land Division Act very well, which is quite complicated, and they work with the planning and zoning department on those applications. We also process splits for all local units and BSNA, and they're also mapped all the new parcel lines. And also, as part of, not part of our regular state mandate, but we do review legal descriptions for every warranty deed that gets approved. And with us being shorthanded, sometimes there are delays in that process. Other services that we provide include PA 116 applications, any sales information. We work with on the public and local units, assisting taxpayers with any questions they have, legal description questions, name and address questions, and help with GIS maps. As part of our state mandate, we all work together. Our administration staff is just as important as the appraisal staff as far as doing those equalization studies. We depend on the splits, we depend on the maps that are used when we go out in the field. Our sales data has to be entered, and entered properly, whether it's arms length sale or non-arms length. My equalization aide does send out real property statements to verify sales information. Sometimes on our commercial industrial sales, we do not get sales prices in many instances because they want them to be private. So there's a lot of research that's necessary on those large sales. Also, some new projects. We have been, the state has constantly given us new duties. Now we have to calculate the personal property reimbursement, which is a very elaborate spreadsheet. We've taken on other projects that the states allocate us to us. The 4626 is now done by equalization, which is a tax form that has to be exported and imported into the state website, which is also used for revenue sharing. We did do a lot of assistance in the past as well, the millage projects, the tax calculator was put online on the website, and we put a lot of time into that, make sure that was being calculated right, and we had numerous questions about the millage proposals that Now that we are shorthanded, administrative staff, they have to work together as far as making sure the deeds are kept up on a regular basis. So people are doing multiple jobs, basically, at this point. My equalization aide has to enter sales, and sometimes the description manager has to help when we get behind. So they do work as a team very well, so we're very lucky in that situation. We are okay with the current volume of work that we're seeing to reduce the vacant position. We're now looking at a reduction of eighty-one thousand seven-- We're now looking at a reduction of $81,078 for that position, which that still allows for some overtime for the administration staff. And so that brings our total budget to $767,898 based on that recommendation. But at this point, I am very concerned about staff leaving. So that's a big concern in the department at this time. They can basically, there's numerous opportunities with the amount of training that they receive. An assessor now has to go through 18 months of training to get their assessor's license roughly, and they have opportunities everywhere, the state, other counties, other municipalities. We're also competing with, from the assessor's side, we're competing with, most of them are contract assessors now, and contract assessors in most instances can work at home most of the time and they can make substantially more money than a full-time appraiser can. So there's a lot of competition for positions. So I do think that we're at a big disadvantage as far as at this point competing with other municipalities, keeping staff. So that's a big concern. If we were to have any more staff being reduced, it would be very difficult for us to make our state mandate. So any questions at this time?
Since he's one of my departments, can you just explain the requirement that the county has for a level four assessor, which is what you are?
Yeah, requirements for level four now are quite difficult. The percentage of people passing that particular requirement to get to level four is about 33%. So the pass rate is extremely low. You have to have so much, so many years of experience and then you have to go through a very detailed training program. It's like going to college basically. And there's, the problem is with the training now too. It's becoming so difficult, there's only 145 roughly level fours in the entire state. And that's required for any large municipality to work for the state for some positions and most counties.
So I'll just say, because I can talk. Since, with that, and you talk about those 140 assessors, a lot of them are going to go into business for themselves because they're making more money as contractors, and I think you've heard a lot of that here today as well, so I wanted to explain that.
Yeah, keep in mind too, the 145, that includes the ones that are retired too. So about half those 145 are already retired.
Yeah. And if you have to have a level four like we do, then that's, if any of you remember, we contracted with Berry County because they could not get one, and so we provided that services through town. So it's very difficult to maintain staff and even get level three. It's difficult.
Commissioner Drosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim, for your presentation this morning. Question, is your department eligible for any grant funding?
No, we're not. We're not eligible for any grant funding at all, unfortunately.
That's unfortunate. Second question, and you alluded to revenue sharing. Where is our revenue sharing at today as opposed to say 20 years ago, or when you started here?
It's been reduced quite a bit. Maybe Connie can talk about that a little bit.
Well, that's more of a question for me, and we can do that. We can give the history of that. We did have to go into a revenue sharing reserve. If you remember, that's why we switched when taxes were collected. And we put all of that money into a reserve that was then distributed to us still based on state calculation, but they had to reduce the allocation we were able to receive. And they've just recently started to amp that back up again. So this last year, we received a 10% increase to our revenue sharing, which is unheard of over the last 10, 20 years, so.
Okay. Well, that's a question I get when I talk to people about the value of their property here in Eaton County. It's not that the value's gone down or that any, it's just that the money that we take from them through taxes goes to different places and it doesn't come back like it used to.
Yes.
So it's not that our property values are going down. My concern however, and this is just a comment, but my concern however, now with our reduced budget in our county and reduced road patrol and public safety and other areas, that now our evaluations are going to go down because we're not going to be as desirable for people to buy into Eaton County, so.
Yeah, that is possible. I am noticing the interest rates are starting to trend down a little bit recently, so that's a good sign. So it's possible that the real estate market could start picking up again because of that situation.
All right. Thanks, Tim. I appreciate it. Commissioner Pearl Wright.
Yeah, I was just gonna, when it was brought up about level four assessors, when I was in office the first time, we dealt with that situation for lack of level four availability assessors. And so we are very fortunate to have Tim Van der Mark on staff here because I know other places were struggling immensely. And there isn't that many, so we dealt with the shortage even back then, 20 years ago.
I do want to mention, we have increased some of our fees. We start chart, about three or four years ago, we did start charging about $100 for the initial application for a split, just because of all the work that's involved in that. So that does bring in a little bit extra revenue. We also started, we substantially, in fact, I talked to the treasurer's office about this as well, and we kind of were in unison with that. We're starting to increase the fees to title companies, so we do get a decent amount of revenue for the information that's sold to title companies. There's some pretty big companies that do purchase our information because we do do a good job of keeping it up on a daily basis.
Does that keep us more in line with the rest of the other counties or other standardized fees?
Yeah. It hadn't been increased in quite a long time, so.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And they are, they are honestly reselling the information, so it's a good benefit for them.
Any other questions for Tim? Commissioner Haskell.
Yeah, I'm looking over the summary and explanation of the recommended budget changes. The one position elimination with preserving some money for overtime equals about $81,078. Our initial request was $73,536. Are those different positions that we're looking to not fill? Like what's the delta there?
Well, the difference that we're talking about, make sure I understand the question. It's saving the general fund the 86, 513 if we have the total position, but because we would add back in overtime so that the staff could cover that, that's why the savings technically would only be the 73. Does that make sense?
Oh, okay.
We added back in additional so that the staff could work overtime, which is not ideal, obviously, because you're actually making the people work more, which is what you've heard from everyone here, so. Did I answer that correctly, Commissioner?
I think so.
All right.
Melissa?
So, the calculation that was done, the approval from the board, May 30th, was for an 85% reduction. So the calculation was giving some wiggle room, but when Mr. Van der Mark and I discussed it, he said about $5,000 for overtime would be sufficient for his staff to accommodate for the ebbs and flows of the workflow, or of the workload. So it ended up being a little bit more than what we, a little bit more of a savings than what we anticipated originally, once we actually looked at the hard numbers on that.
Okay. Thank you. That's the difference. Thank you.
So it's actually a bigger reduction, essentially.
You don't currently have anybody that it's leaving right now, do you? Or is there somebody that's?
Could. It's very possible.
Okay.
Because it's a difficult situation. People don't know if they're going to have a job. They don't know if they're going to get a raise. They have to look at other opportunities.
Sure. That seems to be the case across the board here. Any other questions? Seen them? Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have public defender.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman and Board members. I'm Timothy Havas, the public defender for Eaton County. My presentation is going to be relatively brief, and I'll hit some opinions I have in sharing what I want to this afternoon, and then open for any questions that you have. Obviously, as you probably know, the public defender's office exists because of the Michigan Indigent Defense Act. We occupy that role here in the county of providing indigent defense services to approximately 85 to 90% of the people who come through the county on charges that arise out of either the district court, circuit court, in some cases, the probate court as well. When we are fully staffed, we have 10 attorneys, two investigators, a social worker, paralegal, and two legal assistants as well. At the current moment, we are under our numbers for attorneys just for matters of being unable to fill that role. That's something that's experienced by public defenders and prosecuting attorneys across the state. That's just a fact that we're going through regardless of that. I do say that we have been pleased to say that we found out this past Tuesday that our FY '26 plan for grant funding from the state was approved. We are only one of 29 public defender's offices that were approved, so I'm not sure what's happening with the rest of them, but we avoided any implications, any problems with that. In terms of concerns about how my office will function in light of any reduction overall across the county, I think primarily the thing that we are concerned about, at least I've told my staff to be concerned about, is reduction both in court staff and also in specialty courts. The specialty courts are in my mind, both for my staff attorneys and also for the roster attorneys, are critical for our clients. And I'll make this perfectly clear. I look at what's going on in terms of not so much for my office, but in terms of my clients and the services that we're providing to them. We use the specialty courts, whether it's drug court, hybrid court, sobriety court, or anything such as that, as an alternative to prolonged incarceration on behalf of our clients, many of who come through because of either drug or alcohol addiction. And it provides us the ability to give them some needed help that they may not have ever had before, and provides an alternative to prolonged incarceration. I simply do not know, if we don't have specialty courts available to us, the alternative. It certainly will diminish my client's ability to receive necessary help in their personal lives, and for whatever reason that got them into trouble to begin with is sometimes irrelevant to the fact that that was made or caused by an addiction of some sort. It also would be for overall court staffing, will be communication from our office to the court itself and back. No one wants to have, to come in here and deal with a court issue and then have a prolonged wait for whatever reason. So we are concerned about that as well. And no particular order, obviously, any reduction with staffing for the sheriff's department as well. That may sound odd coming from a defense attorney, but it really is not. We rely upon being able to access our clients pretty much when we need to see them. And if we have reduction in times and days of the week, it's going to impact our ability to adequately represent our clients, provide them with the necessary information they're going to have. And quite simply, with the, any reduction obviously in law enforcement personnel, I think that's going to, just to create a bigger burden both on my office, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Lloyd, but on his as well, because officers can only do, or deputies can only do what they can and provide us reports that may not be fully generated, which puts a burden on, at least on my end of things, to have investigators look more fully into the cases that are charged, and provides a burden on both my office and the prosecutor's office in trying to figure out what did happen and what we can do to go, to come to what is the correct outcome for a client in this situation and for the victims in this situation. So it is a ripple effect. It's a ripple effect that I've been telling my attorneys to be conscious about. Our key going forward is to be patient, to be patient with one another and understanding what we're going through. But just to say that because I'm getting my funding from the state as far as a state grant, doesn't mean that we're not impacted at all. We're going to be dramatically impacted depending on the decisions that are made. I thank you for your time and open to any questions that you have.
Any questions? Commissioner Drosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation this morning. You're fully funded by state funds, correct?
That is correct. Our funding comes directly from a state grant from the MIDC.
Okay. I hate to ask this, but how long do you think that funding's going to last?
I envision that funding to last for some indefinite period of time.
Okay. But at that point where the state decides to withdraw funding, then it will be the county's obligation to pick that up?
That's a decision that's above my pay grade.
I appreciate that answer. You mentioned interaction with the sheriff's department, and how much time does your office take from the sheriff's department? You talked about things that the deputies had to do. I mean, are we talking about, say, one deputy's full-time employment that takes care of things that you need for your department?
I've never have seen any type of figures about that. I would say with the current schedule of visitation, when I go and see a client in lockup, they have to be taken from their cell or wherever they are escorted to the room where the interview's going to take place. Obviously, that takes some, you know, five minutes probably both ways for the deputy to do that. So it's 10 minutes per visitation. If you multiply that out throughout the course of a day, probably an hour or two per day. So you're probably taking about, you know, 12 to 13 hours per week, so it's a good amount of time.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm just wondering if it'd be beneficial to, just kind of, I know we've probably talked about this, to remind the board of what, I know, you know, primarily funded by the state, but what things that we, or you at the office and the board has to look at as far as any financial figures or decisions when it comes to defender's office?
Melissa's the one in the back room. She could talk to that. Ben would talk to, again, if we're going to talk about 15% funding fee, which we are now taking through that grant. It's, again, for IT facilities who built the office. Now, we had a contractor. We paid a contractor, but Chad's office did all of the work when we added the office over in the health department. So if that's what you're asking about the impact, Melissa can talk to the budget. Ben can talk to the hiring and HR as well.
So Mr. Havas and I coordinate quite a bit regarding his budget and then financial reports. There are quarterly reports that are due, and then the budget takes a substantial amount of time to build out and ensure that it's in line with not only the grant funds, but also with the county. So there's a lot of coordination with our offices regarding that. It's not as substantial as some of our other grants, but it does take time, and that is one good thing about having our cost allocation plan, that we're able to recapture some of the costs that our office, facilities, technology, all of those costs are impacted. All of those offices are impacted and we're able to receive funding back for that, so.
Any questions for Melissa?
So the transfer out is the total amount that's required for the transfer to MIDC. That's a statutory dollar amount that changes every year based on the Consumer Price Index, I believe. That, the transfer out, that does not include the revenue that we received back, which I believe was about $170,000 for this upcoming fiscal year. So really, that dollar amount is quite a bit less, so.
When you say transfer out, just, I think what, I mean, you're correct in everything you said, Melissa. It's just that this is a transfer that the general fund sends to the public defender's budget, and then there's a transfer out that goes from the public defender's budget into the general fund for services. So that's it. It's the same thing, just opposite ways. And you have to account and make sure that you show the full 447 because the other is an admin fee. If that makes sense.
Commissioner Pearl Wright.
I don't even know if this is where I asked this question, but he mentioned how many hours he-- many hours these figures for, like, going over to the jail for visitation, correct? Like fifteen maybe or?
I was trying to attempt to say exactly if we visited clients often in jail, the amount of time that would be taken up by deputies in transporting those clients to and from the interview room to see the attorneys.
Okay. Would that not be the corrections officers that are doing the movement of these people to visit their attorneys?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Okay. So we have to maintain a jail. Here's where the, I didn't know what to ask. Where? But what I just heard, he's calling them deputies. I call them corrections officers.
They are corrections, well, they're called corrections deputies, but it is the Corrections Division or the Jail Division of the Sheriff's Department that does that.
Okay. So we have to have jail corrections deputies?
Correct.
So this not to be confused with road patrol or sergeants or anything to do in that avenue?
I think when Tim was talking about that, he's probably talking overall the impact of cuts, you know, because--
Are we cutting corrections?
No, no. But I think in total, I mean, everybody's confused in terms of what the divisions are, but cuts that you make, the sheriff would probably tell you, impact his entire office, including corrections, because you're, you know, command officers, whatever. It's just kind of a circular thing, but you are totally correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to get this understood as we're actually going through this long process.
Yeah, road patrol would not impact what Tim was talking about.
Okay. So you would still be able to get correct visitation time with your people that you need, was my overall.
That's what I hope for.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ben?
Yeah, so I would just, for, you know, additional context, and this was before my time, but prior to us actually forming a public defender's office, we relied on contractual services and you were the administrator that helped, you know, manage those contractual relationships. And as the state has moved to build a different framework and a funding mechanism that you're all familiar with, that office is now predominantly made up of staff, so budgeted at sixteen FTEs. The reason I mention that is because when you move from a contractor to employees, the county assumes a lot more liability because we're now responsible for those people, not just from, like, pension and health insurance and that standpoint. That's significant. But also the liability of managing those employment relationships and personnel. So when we talk about, you know, costs and impacts, you know, we didn't add additional HR staff when we added a whole new department of sixteen people. So, and the hiring difficulties with attorneys, that's plagued with both the prosecutor and with the public defender's office. And in some ways, we've turned into a pipeline of an apprenticeship program where we're getting people before they pass the bar or we get an internship, you know, we're having to recruit on the front end, similar how Sheriff's Department isn't recruiting people who have already been EMO certified and come in with years of experience. We're getting people that are interested in that pathway and then training them up. And prosecutor's office had talked about the tenure of the people that have less than six years' experience. So that's part of the work that we do in trying to support these offices. So just as we add context to this, and the other piece I'd mention too, is there's a direct relationship between the work the prosecutor's office does and the public defender's office, and they rely on each other significantly. So similar to what was stated, you know, any reductions on one part of this ecosystem will have a ripple effect throughout all of it, so I guess that would be what I would add.
Yeah, and this isn't anything against you, Tim. I just wanted the board and everybody to realize that when you say we're funded by the state, well, there's a cost that comes with that, okay? And I just wanted everybody to know what that is for us, so. Any other, yeah.
That cost to us, as you're saying, is that where, are we allowed to put those costs into when we submit it to the state for funding? So is that where you can put a fifteen percent?
Correct.
Admin? Okay. Just checking to see--
We just started doing that for this budget year, and it was added for next budget year as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, it's twelve fourteen. Let's take half hour for lunch and then we will resume.
All right, let's get ready to get the next round going. Next up is Emergency Management.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ryan Wilkinson with your Emergency Management Office. Yep, come and talk to you many times kind of about what it is what we do and what our mission and vision is, right? But our mission eliminate disaster disparities, you know, through disaster response readiness and resilience through whole community engagement, deliberate planning, you know, impactful training and purposeful exercises in ways that are relevant and meaningful to all of our communities across the entire county, right? With our vision, of course, being to create and nurture, you know, the readiness and response and the resilience capabilities across the county as well. I always say a small but mighty office of two, right? But that Emergency Management Specialist position does come out of the 101 general fund. And that's the salary of the position as well as a couple little ancillary items as well as it relates to maintaining some training requirements and certifications. So when you look at a small office of two, right, you know, the Emergency Management Specialist position is basically just an offshoot of me. They have to, we have to do everything in our office, right? There's, there's basically two emergency managers because we have to do everything together just when you have to talk about delegation of responsibility and things, right? So we, we talk a lot about the different things that we do between, you know, planning and assessment. I mean, we're charged with maintaining the emergency operations plan for the county. We're also charged with maintaining the continuity of government and the departmental continuity of operations plans. We maintain a whole host of other things as well when you talk about our hazard identification, risk assessment, our disaster recovery plan, pre-disaster mitigation, all these different things that we try and oversee. We evaluate and revise on a set plan schedule that we've now got in a synchronization pace over the course of the next five years. Certainly training and exercise is a big component as well. We bring in training, we send people to training, we use grant programs for that frequently to be able to do that. And then you're talking about the exercise evaluation and corrective action program that we do. So you've got all these plans, right? You've got all these training, training opportunities. Well, you've got to validate those in some way, shape or form before something happens. So we try and validate plans, policies and procedures, organizational structures, types and number of resources, equipment and systems, as well as, of course, the training that we've done through exercise and evaluation. Then we can go back and revise things as we need. Then we can go back and revise things as we need and try and close gaps. That's just the ongoing cycle that's always happening. And that's not to mention, of course, emergency and disaster coordination, right? When we have problems that meet certain thresholds here, you know, we activate our Emergency Operations Center. We bring the right players around the right table, have the right conversations so that we can work on problem solving. That's a 24/7, 365 kind of eye on the sky thing that we always keep track of, right? But that's between county government personnel, as well as bringing in external stakeholders as well, police, fire, EMS, public health, Public Works, all these different entities, again, to help solve problems, marching us forward in the same direction. We do that through the Emergency Operations Center. I would say that we're leaders in terms of public information and crisis communications here within the county. Especially in crisis communications, we work very closely with 911. And then we use our internal and external stakeholders as well, like Logan, and then, again, all these other agencies to amplify the message, especially during a crisis, right? Make sure people have the right information that, at the right time, so they can make the right decisions, whether it's for themselves as individuals, their families, businesses, so on and so forth. And then you're talking about emergency and disaster recovery support, right? And we've been through two presidential, presidential disaster declarations in my seven years here. I always say, you know, if you get a presidential disaster declaration, it takes about a year out of your life. COVID took about three, but that's okay. Our last presidential disaster declaration, right, August 2023, storms, which we ended up getting the presidential disaster declaration following spring, coordinated with our state and federal partners to get about $350,000 back into the hands of individuals that had uninsured or underinsured losses. And then we were able to get about up to $1 million back into six different jurisdictions when you're talking about public uninsured or underinsured losses as well. So that was a big project a year ago, again, coordinating with the different partners, having town halls, public information and education campaigns, making sure people, organizations, agencies, industry knew what they were entitled to and that it was available to them. So obviously, when you're talking about, you know, reductions or anything, I mean, you know, if you were to reduce that position, that's a 50% loss to my entire department, which would be crippling, just to be honest with you. We do a lot day to day. Certainly, it amplifies up when we are activated with the Emergency Operations Center, coordinating with our different partners. But all the different things today, the things that we do, seen or unseen, and I know oftentimes it seems like maybe the only seen stuff is when you have that bad weather event, when Mother Nature just chooses to kind of burp, when you have any sort of technological hazards that may come into play, whether it's, you know, water supply failure, some sort of industrial fire, if you're talking about a hazardous material spill. Train derailment certainly on our Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment list as well. And then let's not forget those low to no notice events, particularly when it comes to human caused threats, right? Whether it's that active shooter, if it's that cyber attack, other things that we may dealt with. I like to think that Emergency Management is at the forefront, we're the lead coordinators, the lead collaborators, again, to make sure that everybody's around the table making the right decisions. And that requires both of us, right? Again, that Emergency Management Specialist position is just an offshoot to me. Ella does all the same work that I do on a day to day basis, or even during an emergency or disaster. So I just wanted to come and highlight that for you real quick. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about our department, or so, any sort of areas at risk or things that we may face.
Any questions, Ryan? None? All right. You did a good job, Ryan. Guess there's no questions. Thank you. All right, next up, we have planning and zoning. Brandy.
Hello. I don't have much prepared because we didn't know if we were actually speaking or not. As the board is aware, we are moving forward with contracts for our 11 townships to have them pay 100% for the planning and zoning services. The draft contract was just sent to the Controller's Office this week. The plan is to charge them for the $15,000 right off the bat. Our permit, our permit fees have increased as of June 1st. So we have seen increased revenue from our permit fees that took effect on June 1st. So, do anybody have any questions regarding the process for the, for the contracts?
Do you know, is everyone on board with that right now? Do you know?
Yes, as far as we are aware. All 11 townships are on board. They're, they're just waiting to see what does the contract look like? And it's not, we don't anticipate just giving them a contract and saying, this is what it is. We want to have a conversation with them because they might want to add or remove or do other things. And it'll be each township signing. It's not one contract for the whole 11 townships.
Any questions for Brandy? Commissioner Haskell?
I, I guess, as you go along, I'm sure you'll be dropping in, giving us updates on how those conversations are going and...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Grosho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brandy, for being here. Out of our county, and I think you kind of answered the question already, how many townships do not participate with planning and zoning?
Five.
Five? And that's because?
Oneida, Delta, or, sorry, Oneida, Delta, and Windsor have always been charter townships. Once upon a time, Windsor, back in the 70s, was a part of our zoning. When they became charter, they took over their own. Benton Township became charter and took over their own zoning. Charter does not mean they can't be a part of our zoning district, but they took over their own. And then Hamlin Township also took over their own.
Okay, so it's, for everyone's understanding, that any township can take on their own planning and zoning if they choose to. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and their only liability then would be the legal fees should they be challenged in planning and zoning?
If they took it on their own?
Yes.
Besides the cost of actually enacting it, yes.
Yeah, staffing and that sort of thing, but that, that is a major liability for a township. Is that true?
It is. It is, and we are, our, our proposed $15,000 is exorbitantly less than any consultant services that they would find to not only write a master plan, write a zoning ordinance, and maintain the legislative updates that are required throughout the years.
Okay, thank you. Hypothetically, and this is purely hypothetically because I don't see it ever happening in Eaton County, but should every township decide to do their own planning and zoning, what would we need at a county level to complement that?
So Manistee County actually does consulting services for their townships. They don't have county zoning, but they do consultant services, and then they charge for those services.
Okay, so it's feasible?
Correct.
Okay, all right, because I've been asked that question, so hopefully that person that's asked that question is watching today. All right, thank you, Brandy. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Barber, then Commissioner Holmes.
Yeah, Brandy, I, so you said that the contracts were in the Controller's Office this week?
Correct.
You know, like, the timeline is getting short, so do you foresee making it before the October? You know, because we're in this budget, so, you know?
Yeah, it is still doable. Controller Sobey, by way of Mr. Garrison, received the contracts yesterday. We are just waiting for the approval to send them on to our attorney, but obviously Controller Sobey needs a moment to look at them, so...
And just making sure, I mean, I'm sure you're putting enough emphasis on this, but, you know, most of these boards run on a monthly timeline, so if we don't make a time, it might be difficult to have them do a special board meeting to approve the contract or not. So you've just got to stay on it.
I have been in contact with most of our townships. Excuse me, they are all aware that if, if this goes through and if they sign the contract, that we are looking for payment prior to October 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Holmes.
Do we understand there's across the board 15,000, or is any variables for a township that has less need or less, less often things for zoning, planning?
There aren't, because across the board, townships all have a need for planning and zoning. It's just what at, staff time is always spent, but does that staff time always come by way of an application? No. An example is the, the township that I think most of you, including your township, Brookfield Township, you would think wouldn't require the most planning and zoning services, but they have a brand new surface mine that's going in front of the Planning Commission in July, on July 8th, actually. And we have a 600 acre solar farm that's looking at making application in Brookfield Township. So there's, there's not a pay for play type service that I think we can fairly dole out. I think that making it equitable and across the board, and even doing the code enforcement the way we are, we're going to continue to do the code enforcement, doing the tickets and things of that nature. But if a code enforcement action requires us to consult with an attorney, or requires us to request a court order, the townships themselves will have the control to say whether or not they want us to move forward in that manner, because a township will have to pay for those attorney costs, court costs, and then subsequent cleanup costs of any kind of enforcement.
That's it. Thanks. Commissioner Arndt.
What level of communication, if any, is there between your department and the townships that have their own master plans and zoning boards and planning commissions?
Quite often, actually. Benton Township and Hamlin Township often call our office just for consultation services about what was the history of Eaton County's planning and zoning, and how do they move forward with their own planning and zoning? They both are still operating under interim zoning ordinances.
So that's basically a weekly or a daily or?
I would say weekly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Claudine was just going to step up and talk about the contract and the review that she's doing with it, and making some changes so that it's one contract and not, right now, it's set up as strikeouts for the contract for planning and zoning?
Yeah, so I kind of gave that to me yesterday. I haven't had time to look at it yet, but we'll be looking at that. We'll be talking with Chris and Brandy and getting it to Tim Perone, hopefully on Monday, so that he can do his review of it. I feel like I'm sideways.
Okay. Okay, good. Any other questions? Okay, now you're on, you're officially up there for you.
I am. I am. I am the Intergovernmental Affairs and Development Director, and I also manage the Community Development Department, which includes Veteran Services, Housing, and Economic Development. As you can imagine, that results in being responsible for several different disciplines. The department has two FTEs. My, me am the Veteran Service Officer, Tom Lewis, and a part-time Veterans Administrative Staff. However, that position is currently vacant as that person has resigned and moved on, again, not knowing what the budget was going to have in it. So Tom is here today. He's going to cover the Veteran Services portion of the department. So Tom, if you want to come up and cover what you do as the Veteran Service Officer for the county.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time. So what I'm going to do is lay out some, some talking points on five separate topics regarding the Veteran Services Program. This information is more, or I'm sorry, this information and more is also included in the full PDF report that's been provided to all of you online. So if you would please review the Veteran Services Report in the days to come, and if you haven't already. So Topic 1 points out that a huge void in services would be created for our Eaton County veterans if the Veteran Services Program is terminated. To highlight this, we have 6,765 veterans in Eaton County. We've also served hundreds of surviving spouses and dependent children in Eaton County. And if Veteran Services is terminated, our veterans would have minimal service alternatives. Our veterans depend on us and need the guidance of a local, stable county service office. It's difficult enough for veterans to navigate the VA process with a Veteran Service Officer, but having to navigate it without a service officer is usually a disaster. And incidentally, if Veteran Services is cut, Eaton County would become only the second county in the state without a Veteran Service Office. So Topic 2 pertains to our in-house veteran programs. These programs are separate from VA benefits, and all of them are fully funded by state grant money. The dental program is a collaboration with My Community Dental Center. The Meyer voucher program provides grocery cards of $100 each for veterans and surviving spouses. The VA, the VA Pay Program, I'm sorry, the VA Co-pay Program covers past due healthcare co-pays from VA Healthcare for veterans who can't make their payment. And the transportation program, which we've, we've had for quite a number of years now, uses local volunteer drivers to transport veterans to VA medical appointments. All of these programs are very popular. And of course, these programs will also terminate if Veteran Services is cut. Okay, Topic 3 focuses on the financial impacts to the Eaton County economy if Veteran Services is cut. So consider this. VA expenditures allocated last year to Eaton County veterans, spouses, and children were $78,336,000. And the total VA expenditures since Eaton County Veteran Services began in 2007 are $720,559,000. These annual VA benefit proceeds create needed revenue for the Eaton County economy. And clearly, terminating Veteran Services will cause a substantial negative, negative impact to that economy. Moving on to Topic 4. Topic 4 highlights the fact that Eaton County Veteran Services is an extremely low-budget program. So despite the large impact Veteran Services has, it's extremely lean and efficient. In this fiscal year, the Veteran Services budget was only $86,682. Of that dollar figure, just over $81,000 go toward my salary plus standard benefits. This leaves only $5,643 allocated to non-salary expenses. And given the numbers in these previous topics, Veteran Services is highly cost-effective. Finishing up with Topic 5, we should recognize that Veteran Services also enhances the quality of life for our veterans. Veteran Services can certainly enhance lives from a financial perspective through VA compensation benefits. But beyond that, our program creates a lasting impact on the physical and mental well-being of our veterans as well. Our veterans deserve their benefits, and they need Veteran Services to advocate for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone, any questions? As the, the person you've lost, so you're taking care of everything in the office, correct?
Some, almost, the three out of the four programs, I'm sorry, who am I?
Evidently, it's echoing in here.
Yeah, I was trying to lip read here, but Lori Kirchmeyer in, in the Controller's Office is covering three out of the four programs that, that Barb was, was covering.
Okay.
I'm covering the transportation program, so, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know if that's going to be permanent or not, but that's, that's how it's being done right now.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for coming. I've asked Claudine this question before, but I think it's, it's a question I have to ask so that the public can hear this. What do you think, can you give me a breakdown of like the age of the veterans that you're seeing? All right, is it old Vietnam, you know, is the majority old Vietnam vets? Or what's, what's the age range, you would say?
We do have some data on that. It, it didn't make it into here because, you know, we had to stop at some point, but I can certainly get that information for you. But ruling certain segments out, the World War II veterans are certainly not in the larger category. I would say... I would say we work with primarily Vietnam veterans and a lot of Vietnam veterans who never even attempted to, you know, get into the VA system or file for any benefits. So we're getting a lot of them, even though, you know, they've been out of the service for a long, long time. So that category, plus the Gulf War veterans. Yeah, absolutely. But if you want specific information, I'd be happy to give it.
No, I just wanted, I want the public to know that, you know, we're not talking about real, the real old veterans, you know, the World War II veterans and stuff like that.
Right.
And the Korean War veterans. We're talking more younger, your population is coming to you to receive services is a more younger population than an older population of veterans.
Yeah, and then there's the Korean conflict era, too.
Yeah.
We have a fair amount of those veterans, but also there's, you know, within the various peacetime eras, they oftentimes qualify for VA benefits, too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haskell.
I know this is gonna break from our norm briefly here, but I did wanna say quickly that at our last meeting, we had a communication about, you know, please don't cut veterans' benefits, you know, and it seemed like it was implying that we had a plan to do that, but as we can see on the screen here, that we did not actually recommend any cuts to the Veteran Services.
Correct.
I think that resulted from a lot of the conversations. It's one of the departments that was brought up frequently as a potential cut, even though it never really was on the table. I think that's probably where that came from.
I agree. I just wanted to give it out there.
And I get a lot of calls across, you know, the county that a lot of people that don't realize that the benefits or the service is there, and/or they go to Lansing or Ingham County thinking, you know, that's where they gotta go. And so, thank you for what you're doing.
And you probably already know this, but they can't do that.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure of that, because that would be a big issue.
Yep. Evidently, my name is up on their wall somewhere.
I don't know. I don't know what happened with that.
That's just fine.
I had a veteran come in the other day, and then we were chatting, and one thing led to another, and he said, "Yeah, if you, if I don't get you on the phone, I can always call Mr. Mott." And I'm like, "Where did that come from?"
I'm asking the same question, but that's okay.
I apologize for that.
That's not your fault. Any other questions?
I put A to the V.
Oh, it's you then. Commissioner Durocher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your report this morning, or this afternoon now. The funding for Veteran Services are all grant, or federal grants, correct? Where does the funding come from?
Veteran Services?
Tom's position is general fund. The part-time Veterans Administrative Assistant is grant-funded.
Okay. But the funds themselves for these services come from where?
General Fund.
No, I mean, the money that we give to veterans for whatever things they need, is that general fund money also?
Are you talking about the soldiers and sailors?
Whatever benefits from?
Emergency fund for soldiers and sailors that they give out to people who have a hardship and can't pay their rent or groceries or things like that, that's county general fund money.
Okay, all right. So there's no grant funds available for this?
For, you're not referring to VA benefits, right?
Whatever that we're giving money out, where does the money come from?
The VA benefits people get do not come from us.
Okay.
If Tom helps them apply for a service-connected disability example for hearing, as an example, and they get paid money for that, that comes directly from the VA.
Okay, so my question then becomes, this money that comes out of our general fund, is there any way to recoup those funds from VA or any other entity?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
But we do have that nice state grant, and that helps a lot.
So there is grant funding available, then?
State money, yeah.
For the part-time position and for the Meyer gift cards and that stuff.
All right, but there's no reimbursement funds available for our expenditures? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Our veterans deserve access to these services, dignity, and strong support, and Tom ensures that, and he does a fabulous job at doing that for the county. I just want you all to know that. A summary of my responsibilities was included in your packet. I'd like to just focus on my role as the Intergovernmental Affairs Director today. You've heard from me before and the other things, and they're all in the packet. First of all, I know there's a little bit of chatter internally and online about the creation of this position and what I do. Fortunately, you all see me a lot, and you have a good idea of what I do. I hope this presentation covers major points of my role. It's not exhausted. That's included in the packet to help those that don't clearly understand it. I'm proud to have been here for 24 and a half years, serving the residents of Eaton County, along the way saving some money for the county and the constituents as a result, and helping them all to get the services that they deserve as residents of the county. If anyone wants to know more about my day-to-day responsibilities, I'm always here, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So as the Intergovernmental Affairs and Development Director, I provide oversight, support, and leadership and assistance for county departments and all things planning, so strategic planning, development, implementation. Examples of that would be the Strategic Parks Plan that we just did recently, the Capital Improvement Plan, assisting Jared with the Materials Management Plan, the Board Bylaws, Rules of Procedure, the current board policies that we're in the process of creating. I assist with special projects and lead the development of countywide initiatives and coordination with county staff, local units of government, and residents to ensure the county goals and objectives that you want are being met and to ensure that we do the things that are important to everybody on the board. Examples of this are the creation and administration of the opioid funding framework, the Parks Grant Community Program that we have, general grant writing, and recently, I've been representing the Controller Administrator on some animal control activities that we have been involved in. I serve as the Controller's Designee for Public Works and Human Services Committee, preparing the meeting information, coordinating the department's needs and with the department heads and elected officials for the meeting content, and additionally supervise those designated departments reporting to Public Works and Human Services. I serve as staff to the Board of Commissioners, to board committees and board work groups, and represent the county at several meetings, organizations, community events, and additionally serve as a liaison and provide support between the designated departments and commissioners to promote collaboration and maximum efficiencies within the county. Other things that I have done recently are acting as the interim director at the discretion of the Controller Administrator. In 2023, I acted as the Resource Recovery Interim Director, and I'm actually working with Chad Powers, as I did in 2024, now in 2025, as the interim Parks Director as well. Neither one of these things are in my official job description. We're working to add those to the official job description for the future. I also work closely with the Communications Director on several initiatives, grant writing, policy development, various research projects, and legislation. Logan and I work on several projects together, and we are awesome proofreaders of each other's work. Happens a lot. In summary, my job is to ensure Eaton County is not just responding to decisions, but influencing decisions at every level of government. In reference to the budget, I'll just give you a brief history. The Community Development Department used to include myself, the Veteran Service Officer, one and a half housing coordinators, and a part-time economic development person. So over the years, due to budget cuts, the department now just includes me and Tom. So Tom does the Veteran Services, and I absorbed all of the Housing and Economic Development activities. The housing, we used to have a housing program and a person that did the housing program. That is cut way back now, and we just do that emergency program. So that's part of the cut, was not doing those anymore. You could say limited housing assistance could result in more foreclosures if we aren't helping people upkeep their homes. They possibly may lose them. And less time and energy spent on economic development means fewer businesses and development in the county, which obviously means we aren't increasing taxes because businesses aren't locating here and there aren't development improvements in the community. And that impacts all departments across the county. Additionally, over the years, I've contributed to cost-saving measures such as moving, consolidating offices, and reducing staff, as have all offices within the county. Also, whenever we started Veteran Services back in 2008, we were contracting with Ingham. Part of bringing that into Eaton County was a cost-saving measure as well. I would also like to point out the MVA grant we have also paid for a portion of the remodel that we did with Construction Code earlier this year. It paid for all of their new office equipment or office furniture they have down there, and it pays for office equipment. And annually, I include in the grant money to fund some software and IT things, laptops and things like that, so the county does not see those expenses. Those are paid for out of that grant. I'm last today, so after listening all morning and this afternoon, I have some observations that I'd like to share with you. Every department is passionate about the work that they do here at the county. Every department has made cuts over the years, some more than others, but all departments have made cuts. Every department, including mine, is already doing more with less. There is no one department that is more important than another, mandated or non-mandated. Everybody is equally as important here. And most important, I want the employees to know that every employee is valuable and every employee is appreciated that is here at the county. I know it has been said, it will probably continue to be said, but these are tough decisions. Hard choices will have to be made, but someone once told me that we can do hard things. I'm confident together, the board can make these hard decisions, and you can create a balanced budget. That's all I have.
Thank you, Claudine. Any questions for Claudine? I do just wanna add that, you know, there's a lot of things that happen here at the county that don't necessarily show up on paper as a number that has saved the county. A lot of departments have made decisions to that end that really just, you know, don't show up, but they actually save the county money. And this is one of them, and this was a very big, big decision that was made that I think was, has been very beneficial to us here and your position and what you do. So if you could put a number on it, you know, we'd be having a lot of savings, but you just, things that get done sometimes just don't have a number associated with them. But this is one of those positions that probably should have been done years ago. But, so, any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Proright.
Claudine, I just wanted to ask you, do you think we're still in the right direction to pull away from the collaboration we were with Ingham County?
I think contracting with Ingham would cost more than having it in-house.
Okay, so there's no reason to look back, right? Because when that happened?
I'd have to look back at the numbers, but for some reason, 40,000, 45,000 sticks in my head is what we were contracting with them in 2008 for a part-time.
Yes. We had transportation problems for people who were further away from the Ingham.
Right, people had to get to Ingham County via the Human Services Building off of Cedar and Jolly. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, just checking in.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ben?
Yeah, do you mind if I, sorry?
No, good.
So I just wanted to add, you know, Claudine was reclassified into her current position, so this was something that was brought before the board, and it was in consultation with direction, and that's when planning and zoning was spun off into Construction Code. So I'd like to, first off, start by acknowledging Claudine is an existing FTE that was repurposed for the goal of making the county better and more able to find ways to save money and generate activity within the county. So I wanna highlight a couple of those. She'd mentioned the County Substance Use and Misuse Plan. That's going to be managing up to $7 million that will be dispersed either to external agencies or internal departments to help support the community with the havoc that drugs have wreaked or wrought in our communities. A couple other things she was instrumental on, and Logan Bailey as well, 5 million bank in her county grant that not only saved homeowners in Delta, saved the county at large, the Road Commission, and everybody that had a part in that project. She's been instrumental across the board. We have an in-process grant for parks land acquisitions, another 213,000, and I could go through line by line. And like Jim said, there are things that we touched that sometimes don't always, you know, cultivate into like, oh, this savings came from this department, this person. But I will say, when we added Claudine to the Controller's Office for capacity purposes, it has paid dividends, and it will continue to pay dividends. And to Jim's point, if we had been in the position we're in right now, the federal government had done infrastructure money, they had done American Rescue Plan money, which was appropriated out through the state legislature. If Eaton County was at the table, we would have had millions of dollars invested in this community that we didn't get because we were under capacity at the time. I only bring that up because you have to, as we move forward and why we did the restructure we did and why the prior board approved it was because we knew that we were missing out, our residents were missing out, and we're finally showing up. So I wanna thank you for how you've helped our office to be able to shine, and I look forward to all the work we're gonna do to continue to bring money home for the community to try to reduce the cost of government. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to compliment Claudine, but this means that you can never retire.
I don't know about that.
Can I get a second?
I heard you for 24 and a half years, so, you know, I heard that.
Okay. Next up, I don't believe Colette is here for the Health Department, so we're going to go to Community Mental Health. Sarah.
Sarah Lurie, Chief Executive Officer, Community Mental Health Authority of Clinton, Eaton, and Ingham. So thank you for allowing me to present information to you today on the impact of the proposed reductions to CMHA/CEI services in Eaton County. On June 3rd, we received this notice. Clinton, Eaton, Ingham County Mental Health requested 572,682 for general services and 162,975 for jail-based services for fiscal year 25-26. At the May 30th meeting, the board moved to reduce the requests 30%, which would equate to 40877 for general services and 114,082 for jail-based services beginning on October 1st, 2025. So the allocation request that we made, the 572,682 reflects the tri-county agreement that uses a three-year average based on service utilization by each county, and that amount is adjusted each year. The agreement, the tri-county agreement, provides guidance that if a county does not meet the obligation outlined in the agreement, that we must reduce service provision in that county. Both numbers of people served and volume of service provided to Eaton County residents has increased greatly, actually astronomically, over the past five years, going from 1,749 in fiscal year 20 to 3,000 anticipated, projected for this fiscal year. That's over a 70% increase in people being served. The allocation received from each county is used to serve individuals who are uninsured, underinsured, which means they might be on a commercial insurance plan that does not cover the services they need or the full costs of the services they need, or on spend downs, which means individuals who are required to pay large sums of personal income every month until they qualify for Medicaid. And to provide some other specific supports that may be requested from counties. For example, we do use these funds to make two hours of psychiatry time available every week in the Eaton County jail. Some of it is also used to provide a required match that goes to MDHS to draw down Medicaid funds for the county. In identifying reductions based on the allocation, we must balance our obligation under the Michigan Mental Health Code to provide crisis services and core specialty services that prioritize individuals with the most serious and severe forms of mental illness and emotional disturbance. And we must maintain that required match. The reduction in jail services is directly attached to a full-time mental health therapist providing services full-time directly in the jail. Here is the imp- Here is the impact, to the best of my ability, to explain to you today. Jail services would be reduced from the current five days per week to three days per week. Jail psychiatry time would be eliminated. We had previously expanded service in the county to better meet community needs at Eaton Counseling Center, providing outpatient services to individuals with mild to moderate conditions who are on commercial plans, spend downs, or uninsured, utilizing those allocation dollars to cover some of the cost of care. We will need to monitor and limit service at Eaton Counseling Center who have mild to moderate conditions and redirect individuals to other locations and resources that may exist outside of Eaton County. We are not currently planning to reduce staffing at Eaton Counseling Center because of the high demand of people who still meet that serious to severe need for services. However, due to increased volume and known gaps in ability to access mental health care in Eaton County, we had been in talks and discussing with Eaton Rapids Medical Center expanding outpatient services in a partnership with them to provide some outpatient services in Eaton Rapids. This will put that on hold. We also will be taking a look as vacancies might arise at Eaton County Counseling Center on whether we would be able to fill a vacant position. So that is our best thinking right now in terms of maintaining the priority population and work that we must do under the Michigan Mental Health Code in partnership with this commission, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions for Sarah? Commissioner Haskell.
Can you briefly go a little bit deeper into the collaboration you were trying to do in Eaton Rapids?
Yes, we had had several meetings discussing the possibility of sending staff to a, one of the practices through Eaton Rapids Medical Center to have some mental health services available on site. They had let us know that that is, well, we do know Eaton Rapids is, has a huge gap. They're not that close to come to Charlotte, necessarily to Lansing, and there's very little resource in Eaton Rapids, but yet there's, there's demand and need. Eaton Rapids Medical Center used to, pre-pandemic, have a team of social workers that were providing services, but had been unable to rebuild that post-pandemic. So we were working towards a partnership.
Okay, I guess, in that context, would the Eaton Rapids facility pay for part-time and then you would provide the staff, or how does that?
We were hoping to just be able to use our existing funds-
Okay.
-to do that, at least as a pilot. If we were to expand it, you know, start out with maybe a couple days a week, if we were to expand it, then we would, if there was that greater demand, then we'd probably need to ask for them to assist with some additional resources.
My thought was, especially with University of Michigan taking over a lot of the existing Sparrow infrastructure, if there's the demand out there, are there partnerships that where you could share the costs? But it sounds like at least on this pilot program, it was just all on you. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
All right, next up, Eaton County Health and Rehabilitation.
I am, I'm giving that presentation.
Okay.
I had a lengthy meeting with Martha Richard related to their funding cut. We talked about here that the MOE is the responsibility of the county to pay for that facility since it is a county-operated facility. So if you can see by the report here, taking a cut like we did to the 150,000 would not be possible. The only other option would be for the medical care facility to waive that, which it is our obligation. So Martha did take it to her board and talk to them about it, and that was not something they moved to do. So they still want that and need that 150,000. The other thing that they talked about as well was the fact that since the Treasurer's Office or the county is responsible for taking in all of the revenue, when the revenue comes into the county, it's pooled in cash accounts. So their, their revenue for interest is really the county's. So if you take into account the fact that the county is earning interest on, as Martha pointed out, it was $7 million back from July of 2024, then the county has benefited from having those revenues. Not that that's something that we're doing wrong, but if, if they wanted to come to us and say that's a benefit that they should receive, obviously that's something that their board, we actually talked to a board member about that as well. So the 150,000, based on the discussions that we've had, the discussion they had with the board, is an obligation that the county has to make and that has also been confirmed by legal counsel. I don't know if anyone has questions.
Questions for Connie regarding this? Commissioner Rosha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Connie, I guess that means we're basically the landlord for the property, and we just need to take care of maintenance and-
So, the only thing that we do is groundskeeping. We do not do their internal maintenance. They cover all of that themselves. But the maintenance of effort is the required contribution that a governmental-run facility has to make toward the state. So the state bills you. That's what that is. It's not actually me. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barber.
Yes, my, my question, how much interest did we make off their $7 million?
So it's pooled into one account, so I would have to have the Treasurer's Office go back and look at that. But let's say, I think, I don't know if she had put that in her email, what her estimate was. No, she did not.
I mean, it doesn't have to be their $7 million. How much interest is made off $7 million?
I, that I'd, again, I'd have to-
Okay.
Are you doing a calculation?
Well, that's, that's why I sort of looked at the Treasurer, but he didn't, he didn't look up and see me, so. Okay, just sort of curious.
I can speak a little bit to that. So this last, last fiscal year, we earned $1.3 million in general fund interest earnings. That was pooled cash for most of the accounts. So the $7 million would be included in overall cash flows of the county, so, but our general fund, the budget is approximately $50 million. So, just based on cash flows, I, it's a big portion, but probably the bigger portion is delinquent tax fund revenues.
Yeah, it's a back-of-the-napkin math, $7 million at a 4% interest rate, not amortized monthly, would be 280,000 a year, and it would be more if you did the compounding, but real quick, yep.
Good. Any other questions? Moving on. Next up, we got Capital Area United Way. Thank you, you've been here all day, thank you for being patient.
Well, thank you for the invitation. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you about United Way of South Central Michigan's Capital Areas programs, the 2-1-1 program and the VIDA program. I, I found today fascinating to sit with you and to listen to the report outs from your departments, because 2-1-1 as a service, and our VIDA service, our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Service, serves so many of the county residents that you've talked about today. We work to serve those that are considered ALIS households. ALIS stands for Asset Limited, Income Constrained, and Employed. These are individuals who are making more than the federal poverty level, but less than what it takes to make ends meet month to month. And the services of the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance and the 2-1-1 service works to serve those households to make sure they have access to the services and supports that they need. So let me tell you a little bit about the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, if I may. We request it from you, $7,000 for this program. This program brings volunteers, trained IRS volunteers, into a community to help prepare the taxes for your individuals, your families, your households. These individuals come in and work to make sure that every credit is received, whether it's the property tax credit, or the child tax credit, or homestead credit. We make sure that they receive the most dollars back in their returns. Now you may say, why is this such a big deal? Well, because for many, they cannot afford to have someone do their taxes, and quite frankly, for many, they are behind on their taxes. So by having trained IRS volunteer income tax preparers, we're able to come in and support making sure that these individuals are following the law, filing their taxes, and importantly, getting those tax returns back to work in a local community. These are not dollars that people are spending on vacations or fun things. These are dollars that households are bringing back to work right here in Eaton County. It may help them to get a car repaired so they can get to work. It may help them to get what they need for a work situation, or to send their kids to summer camp. It may even help them make those bills that they can't make on a regular basis. We believe strongly in the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. We have been fortunate to have partners in that where we are able to bring volunteer tax preparers into sites that are frequented by individuals in the community. And excitingly, as of this year, we have a brand-new mobile unit that can go into a community, drive into a community, and has three tax preparation stations in the unit so that we can serve more communities and serve, most importantly, more rural communities. This unit came onboard late this spring. We were not able to fully operationalize it for this tax season, but we're looking forward to doing that next tax season. As you can imagine, it costs a little bit to operate that mobile unit, and that's why we've come to you with that $7,000 request for the VIDA services, is so that we can bring that full unit here into this community to provide services to families that live here. Now let me tell you a little bit about 2-1-1. How many of you have ever referred someone to 2-1-1? So, if you pick up that phone that you have, that we all have close and reach, and you can dial 2-1-1 and get connected to a resource specialist who can help connect you or anyone that you know to the services they need in community. It's a non-emergency number that works seamlessly with 911. Our 2-1-1 service is able to refer to our friends at Community Mental Health. They might be able to refer to a VIDA. They give VIDA scheduling for our program. The 2-1-1 service makes not only referrals to health and human services in communities, but also programs that make a difference that are run statewide and that are run regionwide. I'll give you an example. We routinely have individuals who call 2-1-1 because they're unable to make the utility payments, and they're at risk of having their utility shut off. Did you know that United Way funds a program called the Program Assistance Center statewide across the state, where we work with utilities to make sure that we're able to help individuals make payments for their utility services, and they access that service through 2-1-1? So when you invest in 2-1-1, you invest in making sure that residents here have access to services that they need each and every day. We thank you for your continued support of the 2-1-1 system. Eaton County has been a partner in this for a number of years, and we are grateful for that because it allows us to continue to have this robust 24/7/365 service available. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program and/or 2-1-1.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, do you have any estimates of the number of people served, or like with the tax program, maybe from Eaton County?
Yeah, absolutely, I do. Thanks for asking that, Commissioner Whitaker. It's been a while since I have seen you.
I know.
So let me get in here and find that number for you. This past year, we were able to serve 1,300 Eaton County residents with income tax assistance, and we average just about $140,000 returned in income tax returns last year.
Commissioner, go ahead, and then Commissioner Haskell.
So, you know, we have, when we met before and we talked and we looked at your requests and things, and we had both VIDA services and the 2-1-1. And we looked at, like, do we fund both of them? How do we decide what to do here? What do you think would be a better investment for us to invest in 2-1-1 or in the VIDA program?
That's a great question, and I appreciate it very much. Here's what I can tell you. Now, we all know that the state budget is in process and that we are looking at some pretty dramatic cuts from the state budget, but we do have the good fortune of having 2-1-1 that is supported by the state of Michigan as well as by individual funders and county governments, right? If I was asking of you today, and I note that you have considered a $20,000 investment in 2-1-1, I might ask you to fully fund that VIDA investment at 17,000 and to reduce that 2-1-1 funding over this next year. I honestly believe, standing here today, that we will be able to find the funding to support the 2-1-1 investment. I worry about being able to support that VIDA investment.
Commissioner Haskell and Commissioner Proright.
If it's good, anyway, you should go ahead.
No, I was just, I don't know that we really thought we had that option of, you know, taking the total amount of money and putting it elsewhere. We, we had to make some kind of a reduction, so that's how we did it, but I think that's really good.
Absolutely. And, you know, again, I'm saying to you, we would continue, as we have done every single year, to make sure that we're able to fully fund that 2-1-1 system, but we believe that that's going to be a little easier for us to fully fund versus that VIDA system.
Perfect answer, thank you.
Yeah.
With my time in the legislature, 2-1-1 was an invaluable resource. Whenever someone calls their legislator, they're at their end, end of the line, right? They're really desperate to try to find some sort of help, and 2-1-1 was always very helpful. So I guess my question is close to Commissioner Whitaker's. If we were to drop the funding of the VIDA program down to, as the 75% reduction in there, with that limited amount of money, would there be any services that could come to Eaton County, or is it, is it kind of like an all-or-nothing kind of thing?
No, no, I wouldn't say it's all or nothing. I would say to you that, you know, not being able to fund the VIDA service fully will mean that we will not be able to necessarily bring that VIDA unit to this community.
Right.
We'll continue to recruit volunteers. That's the beauty of the system, right?
Right.
It's not paid tax preparers. I'll be real clear with you, it is a free service to the constituent. It is not a free service overall. It's a free-to-the-end-user service, right? We do have an infrastructure we have to keep that includes some staff that have to oversee and do quality control and do other training and work and recruitment, right? But we would continue to recruit for volunteers. It's just that we want to be able to ramp that service up for you and bring that mobile unit to bear in this community.
And you said it's $7,000 is the ask?
Yes, we've asked for $7,000.
Okay, yeah, and honestly, I mean, if, at 1,300 residents without that vehicle, that's impressive, so. So it'd be interesting to see if you guys could do with it.
Commissioner Perrott.
Okay, I'm a VIDA volunteer.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Now.
I appreciate you.
What people don't understand is we will help people with free tax service up to, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's somewhere around $69,000.
$67,000 and below.
Of earnings.
Of earnings, yes.
Household.
Yes. So, my point is, until you see these people that come through the door that have been paying hundreds of dollars and don't realize that VIDA's there, they're just absolutely delighted when they walk out and nobody gave them a bill. Because a lot of these people are at the very struggling levels. I know I've sat there before with clipboards, filled out applications for people who really need help with every penny, and they aren't good at understanding our forms or anything. So, I mean, I'm just, you can't spend your money any better than going back after the heat credit, the weatherization, all these things like that, and $7,000. And if you can increase the amount, the other part is, you don't understand, but our slots fill up.
Oh, every year.
And we really struggle these days. Most nonprofits do as well, no matter what you're in, and to get volunteers. And I know that every year, starting about three years ago, even when we were doing out of the garage during COVID and scanning the applications over there in Lansing. But it's just astronomical, the way we can get money, that even a regular taxpayer won't do. They'll even tell us on the way out the door, "Oh, they missed such-and-such when I paid them." So, you know, we tell them to take their money and pay their back taxes, or, you know, go by and ask for a camp scholarship. Plus, there's always a match that they have to do for kids' scholarships. I'm telling you, I have flyers all over, and I send them out with everything. So, I just, I wasn't here at the meeting where they cut your funding. I, sorry.
All right, we got time for one more.
Commissioner is absolutely correct, right?
Yes, it's wonderful.
It's our, our ability to deliver the service is dependent upon volunteers like you, right? People who are willing to give up, up their nights and weekends. And, just in case you wonder, "Hey, what does this group do when it's not tax season?" It's always tax season in our world, because there are so many people who have not filed taxes for several years. And we, this is when we do those taxes. We do back taxes during this season. We help to resolve those issues so that people can not only pay their taxes, but equally important, you have to have your taxes done to file for your FAFSA. So do you know how many students benefit because we do VIDA taxes? So again, on behalf of the United Way of South Central Michigan, I thank you for your investments in our work.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, next up, we have Department of Health and Human Services. I don't think there's anybody here either.
No, they're not there, Tri-County Metro or Tri-County Office on Aging. So the next would be MSU Extension.
Okay, MSU Extension. Same to you, thanks for being patient.
I thank all of you for this hard job you have. I feel like I just jumped ahead several, so it feels good. I got something back. It's a win, that's right. First of all, we respect, as an organization, we certainly respect the decisions that the board must make, and we understand those completely. We understand the difficult navigation for the coming budget year, and we also are very grateful and thankful for your support of MSU Extension. So I want to say that at the outset. I do want to speak about the implications of the proposed reduction and give some context that may be helpful as you continue to work through these issues and make your final decisions. Since becoming the district director, and that was, it's been since 2018, I believe, we've tried to operate very conservatively. We've tried to, and I think it's because when I first came on, there was a slew of cuts that needed to be made in the 2018 year. And since then, always look to keep expenses down and keep services at the levels that they've always been. So we've tried to do that. We've, we've not replaced positions. When our county-paid support staff left, retired, we replaced that person with a MSU-paid, and that actually resulted in significant savings to the county because of the legacy costs were then absorbed by Michigan State. So that's one example. We used to have a couple vehicles at our use, and one of the first things I did was return those because our educators could use their own vehicles and get reimbursed for their mileage, and that, that made a lot more sense. So we've done those things over the years. When we brought in the MSU-paid support staff that also allowed us to tap into certain accounts to get office supplies and equipment maintenance. So though there was quite the county investment in the office itself, and there still is in regard to our office, but as far as office supplies, office equipment, office equipment repair, I was able to take that on our shoulders, and we do fund that completely on our own. So that brings us to the budget request and the requested reduction. So our request was right at $159,746. And the board has proposed as, throughout, a 30% reduction, which would bring that to $111,822 for the fiscal year 2025-26. So of that, I just want to break down that so they understand. So that, of that, $84,703 is to provide people with expertise, resources, access in areas of agriculture and agribusiness, health and nutrition education, community vitality, food systems and environmental planning, and children and youth programming and resources, including 4H. So that is $84,703 of the original request of $159,746. So with that said, the requested reduction does not reduce any access to 4H programming, and I'm thrilled about that, because I think that's very important. Okay, in addition to that, it does not reduce the access to educators who are some housed in our office here locally, but some housed throughout the state. And I can think of numerous times where we've had educators come over and give presentations, whether it be Charles Gould on solar and agriculture, or Mike State in regard to soybeans. So the point is, is that we are constantly bringing over educators. The county investment allows us to have local county offices, and it has for more than 100 years, so that we can house these educators someplace. But that doesn't mean they only serve the county that they're in. We tap into them all the time, to make sure that we're still providing those services. So that's all part of that first $84,703. Then if you, the next part of that $159,746 is $75,042. And this is to provide that full-time office support, which includes supplies and equipment, including tech, as well as maintenance of that equipment. And it also allows us to have that person that we can depend on to, for residents to access our office 40 hours a week. Okay, so that's the $159,746. With the proposed reduction, like I said, we'd still have access to all programming. We'd still have 4H, those are protected. But that leaves, if we just do the math, $27,119 to provide that office support, office hours, and secretary. So we would have to reduce that secretary's hours. Right now, I have a full-time 1.0 FT support staff in the office. So we'd have to reduce. If, even if we took the 27, and if we said, "Apply that," that would be about a third time versus, versus 1.0 that she is now. And so that would be two to three days a week with reduced window hours, okay, with that reduction. If, if the board were to reduce our budget request by only 23%, so I didn't want to ask anything, but I'm going to ask just a small thing. By only 23%, and that's an approximate reduction of $36,741. So that would just say, all right, well, we're going to fund MSU Extension for $123,004. Okay, that would allow us to maintain everything I've spoken of, but then a 0.5 support staff, and also office supplies, maintenance of equipment, et cetera. And I've found where I have had to reduce down to a 0.5 support staff, it's not ideal. But in some cases, we have two days at eight hours and a day at four. In rare cases, we have four hours a day, so we have some time every day. But there gives a little bit more flexibility than just a third time. So, in conclusion, in regard to the budget request, and that's what we're here for, if you take what the board has proposed to fund extension at that level, and add $11,182, I can have everything we talked about, plus 0.5 support staff. Now, my full-time support staff, I may not be able to keep. I've been honest with her throughout the time, and she may go elsewhere. She may take that reduction in hours, regardless of how it turns out. You know, these are difficult times. But that's, that's what I feel we can do. But with that said, we'll do whatever we have to, for the county's sake. You know, obviously, I've been here quite a bit and listened to it, and it's, it's a very difficult situation that you're all in. So with that, that's the end of my, my budget request presentation, and any questions that you all might have.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Thank you. Hi, one of my recollections, having worked with MSU a lot, with SNAPAD and with other nutrition programs and food systems programs, is that MSU has a pretty high administrative rate. Like, automatically, it seems like at one point in time, it was 40% for, like, for funds. If you, if you got a $100,000 grant, then the university would take 40 for overhead and administration. I'm wondering if that's the case with, like, off-campus projects, or like, how much of that $159,000 that we give you would end up going back to the university for administrative? Not that there's anything wrong with administrative costs, but I mean, versus direct funding to Eaton County people.
Right. Okay, so if you take that, and so out of that, if you take the $75,000 roughly, give or take a couple dollars, that provides that support staff in that, the office supplies, equipment, and maintenance. So out of that, obviously, we have to pay that support staff, okay? Then we have to pay the benefits to that support staff, so that's in there. And then there's a small percentage that is on a, if you look at statewide, it's cost balanced throughout the state. So there are some places where they're not covering their costs for just to have that employee in there. And there's some places where there's more, if you took dollar-for-dollar to pay that payroll, plus benefits, it would be slightly more. But it's cost average throughout the state, that's for that. In regard to the, the other portion, the $85,000, that includes full-time 4H, okay? So that's a full-time salary of a 4H, which is included in there, plus all the benefits. Then it includes access to all those educators. All those other educators, their salaries are paid predominantly through that assessment. And that's, those assessments were calculated years ago based on population, et cetera, and tried to even it out throughout the state. So there is a percentage that goes toward other salaries for educators who support Eaton County.
What's the number, is my question?
Well, I can't give you an exact number as far as out of that $159. I would say that, that it's probably, and we've used this number, for every $1, there's usually $3 in return. So I would say that if you look at the benefits to Eaton...
My question was, if we write you a check for $159,000, how much of that is going to the university in East Lansing versus staying here in Eaton County that you would, that you would be in charge of? I know that there's statewide overhead and all. I'm just wondering what the numbers are when you actually break them down, because, you know, we, of course, would want to have most of the money to help people here right in Eaton County.
Right, right.
And so I just would like to know what the number might be, because it seems like you would have to do that when you write a proposal.
So if you have the salaries and benefits of the staff that are covered under that $159,000, okay, I'm just going to do the math in my head, and that's going to be about $120,000. And then $30,000 is going to go towards other supplies and administrative costs, and to, to allow that programming from all the institutes.
I'm sure the university has a standard rate they use, a de minimis rate that you have to use when you write a proposal. This is my point, is that I just, I don't, I, if we're going to be, you know, supporting other organizations, we want to know where the money's going. And, and like, if it's 20%, that's okay. I mean, just, what is it? Because some of the organizations have higher, you know, external costs that they have to support. And there's nothing wrong with paying for administration or for...
Right.
But the question is, what, you know, at what level? And how much, how much are we really getting for the money that we invest, is my, was my point. So, thank you.
Any other questions, Bill? Commissioner Haskell.
I just wanted to understand your request clearly. So with a 30% cut that we proposed, you're saying that if, was it only a 27% cut? Or 23, okay, sorry. 23%, that would allow the onsite staff to be full-time?
It would allow the onsite, onsite staff, the support staff, to be half-time, 0.5.
Oh, okay.
Was that plus the $11,000? Is that?
That's, oh, I'm sorry. If, that's if we had the $11,000. If, if the cut remains as the same, it would be, that support staff would be down to 1/3 time.
Okay, so that, for reducing our cut 7%, we would go from 1/3 time to half-time?
That is correct.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you.
All right, that concludes the presentation portion. But we have, next up, limited public comment. So if there's anybody that would like to address the board, please approach the podium and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Jim Billig. I'm here again to address you about the Eaton County Drain System. I'm glad it came up today, I want to say. I understand this meeting is here to call about your budget struggles for Eaton County, and I understand that and appreciate it. My concern is my own budget. I'm here to talk to you about that again. Every morning, I call, I have a call list. I call Governor Whitner's, Whitmer's office. I call Whitwer's office. I call Tom Barrett, and Sarah Anthony, and there's, there's a couple more on my list. And I'm sure they're tired of me calling. I haven't talked to any of them in person yet. I've talked to their staff. And they, they might be tired of me, too. I don't care. I'm calling them again tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day. And I'm going to keep addressing this committee, too. I'm generating a little bit of interest, but not near enough to suit my, my needs, or the hundreds of other people in Eaton County who are facing drain issues, these high drain fees. $50,000 and higher is, it gets to be life-changing money. It's unfair. The rules need changed, and I'm not saying I'm going to be the one to change them, but I'm going to make a little noise. And I'm going to be a thorn in some people's sides, and I'm sorry about that. But I think if you got a $50,000 bill in the mail, I think you might make a little noise, too. I would hope so. Thank you for bringing it up today.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the board? All right. With that, I just want to thank all the departments, elected officials in their departments that came today and presented. This is obviously a difficult time for the county, for the, all the departments, and it's taking a lot of stress and time to do what they need to do, to present to us. And so I want to tell them, we appreciate it. Thank you for... Thank you for all the, the numbers and stuff for us to look over. It's a lot of information. But we know it's a struggle, and we're going to do the best we can to try to do the best we can for the county and going forward, and hopefully try to make it so that another board in the near future hasn't got to go through this again. We want to try and put the county on good financial footing if we can, and it's going to take a lot of work, but we will get there. I will, this isn't on the agenda, but I'll, I'll open it up to commissioners for comment for today only. I don't want to talk about any other topics. So if there's anybody, Commissioner, speak.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank everyone that took time out of their day today to present to us, and I found it really informative. I appreciate their, their ability to advocate for their staff and for what they do in their, in their departments. I wanted to mention that I was disappointed with the Drain Commission. I felt like they weren't unprepared and did not advocate for their department and for their staff like the rest of them, and I don't know what to do with that, but I felt like I needed to be said.
Commissioner Haskell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I wanted to also thank all the departments for coming in and making the time and the extra efforts for their presentations. I do get the feeling that maybe a few department heads that didn't get as many questions afterwards were disappointed by that. I hope that's not the case, but many, many departments have been coming in for months and months and months and telling us what their workloads are and giving us a better understanding of what's at stake. So I hope that they recognize that we've been listening during those times and comprehending their problems then as well.
Commissioner Droschel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll echo those remarks. I appreciate the department heads coming in today and giving us a better understanding. My concern is, and Connie said she would address this, and that is our reduced revenue sharing. And my appeal would be to our governor and our current legislature and say, "We need help. Where's our help?" So Connie, if you want to address that briefly, or you want-
Do you want me to call the governor?
Yes, if you would. No, I just, the reduced revenue sharing concerns me, because back in January, we, our state government was bragging, in my estimation, about a nine billion dollar surplus, and a month later, when I talked to our local representative about it, she said, "What's been allocated?" I don't know how on earth in thirty days our state legislature can allocate nine billion dollar surplus to other programs and forget that there are eighty-three counties, many of which are hurting financially. So anyway, take it away, Connie.
Okay. Well, first, I'll say, and I say this to any governmental entity, because we're all struggling, and I'll say the state is, too. Nine billion to the state is not the same as what, you know, we're looking at in cuts. But at any rate, other governmental entities make decisions, just like we do, to how it impacts their community. We just happen to be one of the communities that receives funding from the state, but they're looking at different things. They provide direct services to people, they provide money for the counties, but it's a very complex system, and the county relies on property tax. So part of that revenue sharing is obviously based on revenues the state brings in, sales tax, it's a formula, it's something that we've been struggling with for years, related to our revenue sharing and the amount that we get. And I believe for next year, it's anticipated, and I'm looking at, Melissa, two-point-six million? Two, it's not three million, up to two-point-eight, maybe. And that has gone up. Like I said, ten percent, five percent, they've been trying to do that. It just doesn't address that. I mean, when you're talking about our budget, fifty million dollars, and you're, you're looking at two-point-eight million, it's, it's not a lot. But it's, it's changes that they've made consistently at the state level that concern me more when you're talking revenue sharing, and that is mandated services that we provide and the county's expectation to fund it. That's anything that you've mandated is one thing. When the state passes on a mandate, they're, they're supposed to fund it. So they did that with the Indigent Defense. So MIDC Council was put together, and they did that, and they provided the funding. But they pass on mandates to the courts, they pass on mandates to the prosecuting attorney's office, they change laws that impact law enforcement, they change laws that impact the jail, which we know is a mandate. All of these things add up to what we call, at the county level and local level, is an unfunded mandate. So if I was going to say anything to the state related to that, is that they should look at everything that they pass as a mandate to any organization, any municipality, and that's what they should fund. So that's the frustration that the county has. The state's trying to set up a revenue-sharing trust fund, so that would go into a trust, and then they would have a stable funding source for counties and locals. And then they've tried to do a trust fund for public safety, but that comes with requirements that you have to meet. So if your population is below, or if you, you know, your crimes are, you know, X, Y, Z, or if the county didn't contribute a certain amount, then your funding is going to consistently go down. So there's a lot of things that, you know, they put restrictions and requirements on, on counties. They're trying to take steps to protect, but when we're talking about revenues for the county, again, we're looking at property tax. So I'll take, I know I'm explaining a little bit more, but I think this is important. We're talking about property tax, that's what the counties are getting, that's what locals rely on. We're also looking at, and many of you may have seen it, the proposal that they're looking to take to the ballot in 2026, and that's Axe the Tax. So that would remove property tax, and then it would put that in some other bucket that would be managed by the state. So the state would, again, get to manage the amount of money that goes to your locals. So it's not based on property you live in and the services that you're providing at the county or a city, any local. It's, it's looking at the state. Now, we can afford this, but we can't afford that. So when, when you're talking to the legislature, that's something to talk about if that proposal were to pass. And believe me, I think Eaton County knows it, that the residents of Eaton County are tired of property taxes. They're taxed every way they can, can go, and so when they look at property taxes, and I'll look at the farming community, they have these huge properties, and they're taxed at the same level. When we went to local communities, one of the things that was brought up is, why can't you tax differently for people who don't have improvements on their property? So basically, just farming land. We don't dictate that, so we can't just say, "We'll pass this millage on in this fashion." It's just the way that it is. So I think there's a, there's just a big picture when you're talking about government and government services, and the public told us that they want us to reduce spending. That's just what they've said, and that's really what your option is. We don't have revenue sources unless it were to come in the form of a state, you know, fund. And again, we talk about grants, we try to get every grant we can at the county, but we're all fighting for it. You, you heard Community Mental Health talk about Medicaid and the funding cuts. You'll hear that from every agency, the medical care facility. So I think the state is a, it's huge, we can consider ourselves small, and so, but your job this year is not small. I know I'm like, I feel like I lecture, but I just think that, that it's a bigger conversation than just revenue sharing. I'll take it back to what I, the question was. It's, it's just so much larger than that, and talking to legislators, it's difficult. They're still looking at the same thing they have to look at. You look at what your residents are asking, they're looking at what they're hearing from the people who voted for them. So, I mean, we're all in a really tough boat with respect to providing services that only government is expected to provide. You are expected and mandated to do certain things. Tom.
Commissioner Peralta.
Well, I will add, too, that when they did the revenue conference back in May, that they were surprised that they didn't get what they thought they were going to have for revenue. So now they're throwing up a possibility of August, they're hoping it increases. I don't think it's going to increase because the airlines can't fill the seats and the motels can't fill the rooms. But other than that, Axe My Tax petition, MAC is not supporting that, but also part of that situation would put everything that we might want to do, like when we put the parks millage on so that we could do our updates in the parks and things like that that weren't getting done. We would have to have approval from the state legislature to do anything. They would really get down in here and control for our residents. So that's why MAC doesn't think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Christiansen.
I just wanted to also thank the department heads and to the gentleman that, I can't remember your name, I'm sorry. I want to say thank you for being persistent and consistent in trying to fix this problem. I understand it's a tough time for everyone right now financially, but lack of communication and proficiency from our joint commissioners' office is not what the constituents need. So thank you for being persistent.
Commissioner Art.
I'll admit that during the last portion of it with the external partners, I was, my head was swimming just a little bit, because there were a lot of numbers being read off to us, and no visual aids and no packets or such to read off from, which, well, I'm sure that wasn't only my problem, but the, a lot of the stuff that we've been covering is stuff that is expected to be funded by government, and some of the stuff, in terms of the external partners, we always have the question, "Is this something that we should expect our government to be funding?" And then we ask how much.
I'll just say that we do this in part, and on YouTube, so that the public can see it, and also so we can go back and watch it. Stuff we missed, not everything's going to be on the packet, because not all the questions and stuff were thought of beforehand. So behooves to go back and watch it again, or watch this, today's programming session. So Ben, you wanted to say a few words?
Yeah, it was something that just came up while we were over lunch, but kind of speaking to the revenue sharing and framework that we have to live within, and we do talk about this often at our Ways and Means meetings, but since we're having such in-depth budget discussions, figure good time to bring it up again. So the county is subject to the Headley Amendment, which was passed around 1993, '94, and prior to that Headley Amendment, there was no two tracks for tracking property values for tax purposes, there was just one. At that point, a divergence was set up where property taxes for purposes of what gets, what entities use for determining what kind of revenue they collect, splintered off from the actual true market value of properties. So you have your state equalized value, which is what properties are worth, and then you have your taxable value. And taxable value is indexed to inflation, so it can never be more than five percent or the rate of inflation. And what that has created in Michigan in a long-term piece is divergence between actual property values and what you get when you levy. It's, it's good for property owners, but it's difficult for governments, especially over a long extended period of time, which we are now looking at on the back end of thirty-five years of this policy being in effect, right? Or twenty-eight. So what we do is we track each year, if Headley had not been in effect. So first, we lose value because of those two separate pieces. So when your property value goes up, we don't get an in-kind dollar-for-dollar match at the county level. In addition to that, there's things called Headley rollbacks and resets that exist within the system, but if property values go down, the level of mills that we can levy go down as well. If the property market goes back up, we don't get reset to our original value, we stay locked at that lower level. The only way to reset back to the original authorization is through a ballot initiative, which we have now effectively attempted that in Eaton County, I think about four times since 1992, and it's gotten voted down every time. The margin between that, that loss since 1993 has cost the county twenty-six million dollars. Now, that's money that stays in property owners' pockets, but that is a significant loss of revenue. And again, it's based on a rule system that we, we have to live within, and that's just the reality. A few other examples of rules that are set by the state that we don't have control over, tax increment, financing districts, Tifa districts. We have, I think, about six or seven in Eaton County. Many of them are grandfathered, so they will only generate tax revenue to the county equal to what the property tax value in that community was in 1994. Eaton Rapids, Grand Ledge, are a few of those examples. Between that, we have a Renaissance Zone, which is that battery factory, so we won't get any property tax revenue from that for seventeen years, because that's an economic development deal that the state worked out with the company to get that to come here. We have veteran loss exemptions, which have been changing and evolving, but disabled veterans are exempt and their spouses from paying property taxes in Michigan in the Headley Loss. So when you add that up for 2024, those elements cost the county two-point-seven million dollars, and we live within that. So it's just, to add to that piece of it, not everything makes it back to the county. As people look at their tax bills, just know that the amount of revenue that comes to the county has been going down over the years. And I know it's tough for homeowners, but, but know that we are just doing the best we can with what gets deposited to us at the end of the day, and it's not as much as it used to be. So.
Thank you for that bit of information. A lot of people don't realize that. So, all right, well, thanks, everybody, for being here, and we are adjourned.